I'd like to call this board meeting to an order. First of all, I would like to say good evening to everyone and we're just so happy to see everyone here today. And with that, before we get started, what I want to do is to go over our board norms and protocols. That as a board, we will respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We will follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. To never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and board workshops as a reminder as to how we are to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that being said, we're going to ask everyone, would you please stand as we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now going to have roll call by our board clerk.
Carol Brown. Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Wanda Brownie Page.
Present.
Valdenya Nguyen.
Present.
Stacey Ager.
Present.
Thank you. Need to have a motion and second it for the approval of the regular agenda. Dr. Nguyen?
Madam President, I have an addition to the agenda, please, add an item entitled KCKPS letter to BPU.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So may I have a motion that we accept and the approval of the regular agenda with adding a KCKPS letter to BPU? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. We're now ready for the recognitions and awards. Dr. Faust.
I'd ask that Stephen Linco's come to the stand.
We would like to bring up our preschool student of the month. If you could please come forward. We could just have her stand over here so the board and everyone can see her.
Okay.
If you'd like to go ahead and sing, talk about your...
Do you want me to hold you because I miss you? Hi, I'm Amy Benson and I am a school counselor at North Central Office Early Childhood Center as well as Morse Early Childhood Center. And Naylani has been my student for the past two years. And in early childhood, as a counselor, we focus on social emotional skills and social skills. And Naylani stands out as really mastering those skills. She is a wonderful friend. She's very compassionate and she's very empathetic and caring. She's also a wonderful model in the classroom. She is able to follow directions with ease. She always has a calm body and she always listens and models very well for her peers. So we are very grateful for Naylani and her family and we really admire the skills that she has mastered.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, I'd like to present her with this medal.
Yeah.
Thank you. We would now like to call up our elementary nominee.
Hi, I'm Marion Heckman, first grade teacher at Douglas. This is Venus. And I nominated Venus because I often say that I may be the teacher in the classroom, but Venus is running the classroom. She is very determined. I understand from her kindergarten teacher that it took her a long time to come out of her shell and to start talking in class and to start participating. But once she did, there was no stopping her. And the Venus that I have this year has already, in our first quarter, shown tremendous growth in both reading and math. She's a wonderful leader, very helpful for me and then very helpful because we have several newcomers in our class who don't speak English and she does all of our translating for us and is just an incredible little lady in my class.
Yes.
We can now have our middle school nominee come up.
I am the special education sixth grade at Arrowhead Middle School and I nominated Tenille. We have collab classes and so I've gotten to know her really well in those classes. And every morning I come in, she comes and finds me in the morning, greets me with the biggest smile, tell me hello. Every evening before she leaves the school, she comes to find me to tell me goodbye. She's the first one to volunteer to do anything and I just think for, you know, a sixth grader to encompass or have those empathy skills and knowledge, you know, to come to adults and even just check in with them to see how they are doing, that is amazing quality in sixth grade.
And if we can now have our high school nominee come up.
Hi, I'm Dom DeRosa, a proud educator at FLS Legel High School. And I'm proud of one of our stallions here, Daniel. I've heard a lot of comments about leaders. Daniel's not a vocal leader. Daniel's a quiet leader. He leads by example and he's always willing to reach out and bring his teammates with him because he's not going to leave anyone behind. And one thing I do want to mention about teammates, just last week, he took second place in the cross-country meet and helped his teammates win the championship at our KCAL league. First time since 93. This man exhibits everything about being a team leader. One of the teachers that helped nominate him, Mrs. Worthy couldn't be here tonight, but she wrote a little note, and I need to read this for Daniel. She says, "Because of your care and support, I smile more when I have rough days. Even though I don't have you in class this year, you never fail to stop by and check in. I'm in complete awe of your selfless heart and you never fail to turn bad days into good ones. You are so kind to everyone who come into contact with you and your sincerity leaves a lasting impact. A few weeks ago, I was having a bad day. You walked into my classroom and we asked each other, 'How are you doing?'" Before you left, you told me that I was the reason you learned so much last year. Now I need you to know that because I've had the honor of knowing you and teaching you, you are the reason I continue to wake up and come back each day. With all this being said, she wants to congratulate you on being selected student of the month. You are so special to us and we love you very much. And that comes from all your teachers at Legel.
If we can have our four winners, please come to the front of the stage. We'd like to get a group picture with our superintendent and our board of education.
Yeah, that's a good picture. Yeah, it's good. Yeah.
All right, everybody smile. This way. One more.
Oh, very nice.
I get the pleasure this evening to congratulate our employee of the month, Ms. Deborah Davidson. And we have several people here to congratulate her if they'd like to come up and share in this nomination and award.
Hi, my name is Meredith Marlier and I'm the life skills level one teacher from Harmon. And I had the pleasure to nominate Ms. Davidson. But I'm not the only one that's going to talk about her because a lot of people were super excited to talk about her too, so I got a row. Enough cannot be said about Ms. Davidson's dedication to her students and her invaluable role in the classroom. Paraprofessional may be her official title, but she wears the hat of teacher, mentor, therapist, hairdresser, singer, physical therapist, weightlifter, lesson planner, food preparer, safety enforcer, leader and friend. She knows her students and what they need to be successful without them needing to say a word. With just a look, she can tell if they have an upset stomach or need a minute to rest before tackling the assignment or when they just did something great and deserve to be recognized. She is easily a classroom favorite to all of her students and works well with all staff. As the classroom teacher, I can count on her for anything and she regularly goes above and beyond, calling me on weekends when she finds things she thinks the students may enjoy. She teaches a weekly lesson based on the zoo ed curriculum from the Kansas City Zoo, which introduces us to a new animal each week. She took what they provided and she modified it to meet the needs of our students in such creative ways. She is bonded with a student in the most beautiful of ways and the student's mother regularly calls Ms. Davidson an angel. And on her return from summer break, Ms. Davidson ran, literally ran, to greet her. That's how genuine her love is. Ms. Davidson is a shining example of the passionate, hardworking and often under-celebrated paraprofessionals we are so blessed with at JC Harmon. I hope that you will join me in celebrating Ms. Davidson, who is everything an educator should be, regardless of their title.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hale and I retired as a principal about a couple of years ago. And I had the pleasure, God bless me, and put me at Harmon High School for, to work with these wonderful ladies. And Debbie is just, just absolutely wonderful. She works with all the kids, but her main person is this wonderful lady right here, Faith. And she's so loving and so kind. And if you all ever have one of those days, I know I'm getting emotional.
It's okay.
You need to come and see her because, and all of them, they're so great with our kids. And the kids just love them. They come in the annex from Harmon, from the regular building and say, "Hi, Ms. Deb." And they're so happy to see her. And Faith comes in, she has to play Shania Twain because Faith loves Shania Twain. And I remember one day, she forgot and Faith let her know. And I said, "Debbie, you need to put on Shania Twain." She goes, "Oh, I know, I know, I'm so sorry." And she hugged her and it was just great. And you can just see Faith light up when she talks to her. And talk about in education, when they read books, she helps her mark when they ask questions about their understanding about the books that they read. She helps her mark and they talk about what she's learning and the math that they do. It's incredible. So if you ever want to get a big smile on your face, you guys have got to come see her. And Ms. Mayor at Harmon at Life Skills, because it's just so powerful. And I have to say, I just love you. I know you work so hard and you do so many things to help so many people. And I just feel like God's blessed me to have you in my life.
Ms. Debbie does work with my daughter Faith Warner. And I don't know how to explain it other than the fact that Faithie hasn't said anybody's name other than mommy, daddy, sissy one time, but she sure has said Debbie. The love that Debbie has for her students, at least especially my daughter, I just, I can't describe it other than saying it's the closest that I've seen to my love for my own child that I see that she has for her also. Thank you, Debbie, for everything that you've done and the progress that she's made is tremendous. Even when it's just small things, it's not small. And the love that she carries with her, the whole way that she's working through it, just working with her, it just really, it means a lot. I know that when my daughter comes to school, I don't have to worry about how she is. For the first time, to be honest, since Debbie's been working with her, Faith can't look forward to school. And half the time, she's excited to leave mom. So happy for Debbie, sad for mom. But, you know, it's all good and it feels really good to know that she's taken care of because there's no way she'd be that happy to leave if she wasn't. So, thank you, Debbie.
Your seat didn't want to say so. Okay, just come.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just like to say, we feel very honored of having the opportunity to acknowledge special work that our students, as well as teachers, employees are doing within the school district. It shows that we are on track. And so we want to encourage all to be able to do the best that you can so that, who knows, maybe one day you may be recognized for the special work that you do. But yet and still, we appreciate each and every one who is here this evening. At this time, we're going to have our board updates, starting with the legislative update by Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Should I say right now that's a tough act to follow? But thank you for putting me behind that, this part of the program because it was very inspirational to me and I really enjoyed being able to hear the stories and see the children and the employee. Tremendous. So we, it's hard to believe, but we're less than 90 days away from the 2020 session. I say that kind of reluctantly, but it's going to happen whether I want it to or not. But we've got a number of issues that will be front and center, are pretty important for us next year. And I thought I'd just touch base on those real quickly. Of course, we'll be, next year, we'll be working on the budget year, which will be the third year of the five-year plan that we passed and the court approved. Just to refresh your memory, the Supreme Court reviewed the legislature and the governor's work last year and said if you basically fulfill the five years, the full five years as you said you would, then the court case would be resolved. But we're going to, the court said, "We're going to hold the case and make sure you do that." Because we were in this situation in 2007 with the Montoy case and the legislature, because of a number of reasons, legislature in total, not individual legislators. It was a pretty divided vote, but they basically reneged on the three-year plan at that time. And the court, at that point, had released the case, so there wasn't anything the districts could do but go back to court. So the court learned its lesson and is keeping the case and we're glad about that. So we'll be dealing with the third year of the five-year plan and I basically made a copy for each of you of the state board proposal that they basically talked about this summer, just so that you'd have the numbers briefly in front of you. And the second page of that shows essentially what we're looking at in year three, which would be 2021 fiscal year. We'd be looking at roughly $100 million because the base would go up about $130 in the base. And then the number is a little fluctuating because, you know, we don't know the actual enrollment numbers. So that's a little bit higher than what we thought because we've had higher numbers statewide than what was originally projected. So that's on the table. We very much anticipate the governor will put that in her budget. She has indicated publicly that she intends to comply with the five-year plan and we're thankful for that. And so we'll just have to work the process. It's much easier on a funding appropriation if you're working from a point of trying to keep something in than if you're trying to get something additional put in. So if it's in the governor's budget, that's a good sign for us, that we're optimistic. The next issue is a big issue and it, I gave you this document, which is the 20, it says 2018 Kansas statutes. And the key point that I want to point out to you is number five, the last line. "The provisions of this subsection shall expire on July 1, 2020." This is the high-density at-risk piece of the waiting formula, which in KCK's situation, it's roughly $7.3 million. And we made some changes in 2018 to at-risk, high-density. There were legislators that were concerned because their districts as a whole, the funding for the high-density at-risk waiting was all based on the district averages. So if your district was above a 50% free lunch, you got the high-density additional waiting. There were a number of school districts that did not meet the 50%, but had pockets of poverty. Schools within their district that did. So as a kind of a pilot, the legislature said, "Okay, we're going to allow school districts, schools within school districts that meet the 50% to go ahead and access the money. And we're going to do a pilot, we're going to do an audit, legislative post-audit of at-risk in two years and we will, you know, check it out and see what the results are." Well, I don't think the results are, the audit basically coming out this fall, I don't anticipate that the audit's going to say anything negative about that provision. The problem is when that provision was drafted, the legislature talked about, "We'll do it for two years, we'll have the audit, we'll see how it goes." Well, instead of sunsetting that piece, they set, they sunsetted the whole high-density at-risk, that money that's been in place for 12, 14 years in Kansas. So districts that have high pockets of poverty like KCK and Wichita have a huge investment in getting that sunset language out of this bill. And so we're going to be working through schools for fair funding, through the districts. There's roughly 30 to 35 districts that receive this funding, so it's not like it's one district's problem. And we're going to, we're going to work through and get that obviously replaced. I think we have a very good shot because, again, that money is, was all calculated as part of the five-year plan. So if the legislature does not do that, they're not fulfilling the obligation of the five-year plan. So, but that will be a big issue next year. I see a couple puzzled faces, so if there's any questions you have about any of this, I'm glad to try to respond to them. I know it's a lot of information pretty quickly, so.
Any other questions?
Other issue I'd point out is special education. And this document that, the third page, third and fourth pages of this document are real good about explaining kind of where we are. We have a law on the books that says that the state will pay 92% excess cost. But if you look at the third page, it's 338, you can see that, you know, at no time since 2008, '09 have we been at the 92% level. So we haven't even been complying with our own law. The five-year plan has an additional $7.5 million in it. And if we put that money in, you can see down at the bottom of that page, that would get us to 75.3%. The problem is, is that special ed costs are, you know, as you know, are growing dramatically. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Chair, when you say page three, it says page six and then 338.
338, yeah. Sorry.
Three, it's, yeah, 338, page, number six. And you can see that's in the law, the $7.5 million is in the law. The governor will put that in our budget, but that'll only get us to 75.3%. So there'll be a discussion about what it would take to get to 92%. That's then on 339, the state board has calculated, to get us back to where we were last year, 78%, it would take 19 million. And to get us to 92%, if we did it kind of in a stair step over the next four or five years, it would take, you know, roughly $50 million a year for the next four or five years. So we're not talking about a small amount of money. You know, and of course, the argument that we would make is that, you know, these are mandated costs and if school districts don't have the funds to pay special education, they take them out of the general fund or other, as you know, other sources, they have to be paid essentially. So this, so funding special education helps general ed because it's money then that's freed up to general ed needs. So that'll be a big issue. The other issues, I think that we can anticipate hearing quite a bit about, of course, the mental health pilot, the state board is, I think, going to recommend that we just keep, continue to add another year at its current level. That's important to KCK. Dyslexia, there was a task force appointed about dyslexia and we'll see some recommendations out of them later this fall. I think they'll be looking at, you know, additional resources for better screening tools and that sort of thing to help districts. And then early childhood, this is really a priority of the governor's. And I think we'll see over the next three years, the last three years of her term, some real initiatives in early childhood. I'm not sure what to expect this year. There's been quite a bit of talk about trying to make the system more friendly in terms of, and what I mean, the system, the online system to parents, to be able to know whether they're in Kansas City or Parsons or wherever, what services are potentially are available because there's such a hodgepodge of services. There's a lot of great services, but there's not any, apparently any central place where parents can access to see what their options are. So I think that potentially is something we might see come out of this first governor's or second governor's budget recommendation and the legislature will take it up. So we have some media issues and certainly... of, and what I mean, the system, the, the online system to parents, to be able to, to know whether they're in Kansas City or Parsons or wherever, what services are potentially are available, because there's such a hodgepodge of services. There's a lot of great services, but there, there's not any, apparently any central place where parents can access to see what their options are. So I think that potentially is something we might see come out of this first governor's, or second governor's budget recommendation, and the legislature will take it up. So, so there, we have some media issues, and certainly we'll keep you posted as things go, and, and glad to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, DeWine?
Well, thanks, good to see you again, and looking forward to seeing you soon. Okay, let's work from back to forward. When you said the mental health pilot, that you believe will be funded at the current level, the current level meaning what, with the 10?
Yeah, the 10 million, 10, I think it's 10.3 million is what would be.
Okay, distributed the way it originally was or the, this last year?
The way it's currently being distributed this year. They, Representative Wynn's, what she's referring to is there's a decision made to reduce the liaison costs for the, the pilot schools that were in it two years ago, the first year. And that, then that money was paid at 75% for the liaison positions. And then that money then was used to expand to more pilot, to more schools to be pilots.
Do you anticipate that attempt to expand even greater?
You know, certainly, I can't, I don't anticipate the state board supporting any change. When we went to 75%, you know, I, I was very candid with them. I mean, that was one of the things KCK raised at the time we did the pilot and Wichita as well, that, you know, the problem with the pilot is that, you know, you're, you're making commitments to people, decisions that the board has to make, district has to hire people, and then, you know, a year later, the pilot's gone or altered drastically, then that, you know, causes problems. And, oh, we won't do that, we won't do that. Well, the second year, they made a significant change. And the board, you know, has given me every indication they don't intend to support any more change in terms of adjusting within.
Okay, so what you're presenting to us is the conversation that the state board positioned?
Yeah, this is what I, this document was actually, the state board staff document to their, to the board members at their meeting this summer. And, and it's not a finalized document, it just laid out a lot of the options that generally, you know, as you know, the, in the fall, the agencies then go and meet with the governor and, you know, have a finalized position. This is not their finalized position. They, they keep that in-house until they have their meeting with the governor.
Early conversation?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so just for clarification, we're, I know we're almost always aiming at this 92% tile dream. Where does that come from? Where do we get this 92?
That, that has been in the law for probably 15 years.
So it's 92% of cost?
Excess cost.
Excess cost.
Yeah, and I think it was, you know, we had a study of special ed costs in the mid-'90s, early-'90s, and I think that, the, the problem with the, the excess costs is that costs are not, they're a lot different depending upon where you're from. Obviously, in an urban area where there's labor shortage and, you know, the costs maybe are more than, you know, in a rural area where there's, you know, not as much competition for, for the labor. So, so the 92% was seen as a way to, 92% is, is an, an average of all the districts. That doesn't mean that the districts are each individually at 92, it means that that's the average of 286 districts.
So the state law mandated 92% of excess costs?
Yeah.
That would be the state level of funding?
Right.
And that we've never reached 92, we were at 82 a couple of years, and now we're at 75, or is that where we want it?
We're at 78 this year, and we'd be at 75, 7.5. As you can see, the costs are growing so large that the amount of money we're spending isn't less, but the percentage is going down because the costs are skyrocketing.
No.
So statewide. And I'd point out at this point, part of the problem, you know, in fairness to the state, is the fed, federal government, which has, you know, the special ed law, is funding, they have a law on the books that says they're gonna fund, I think it's 35 or 40% of cost, and they're like at 15. So the state is not getting from the federal government what their law says they should be getting. So it's, you know, the problem's just being passed on. Of course, as you folks well know, when it gets passed on to you, there's nowhere else to pass it. So you, you deal with it as the only way you can.
Excuse me, and finally, please, the high-density at-risk impacts us for 7.3 million. The total cost is something like 53 million.
53 statewide. The two biggest, the two biggest districts are, of course, Wichita's biggest district, theirs is like 15, and KCK is 7.3.
The rest of that cost is spread over these 30 to 35 other districts?
Yes.
This is out of 286 districts?
Right.
So those, is there a possibility that those other 250 feel that they could get some of this money if this 53 million is repealed?
That, that's a possibility. I've talked to a lot, a lot of legislators about this, and even the author of the original provision that changed, you know, to the, when I was outlining schools with high poverty, that their districts didn't meet the 50% threshold, but they had pockets of schools that did. She said that was never her intent. I mean, it wasn't her idea to even sunset any part of it, but clearly the intent was just to sunset that little piece, which was, that one little piece for those few schools was only like $1 million in total. $1 million is a lot of money, but in comparison to the 53, it's proportionally not a huge amount, but, so that's a possibility. But I think the underwriting, I think the overriding issue is that the folk, I think folks are, they've, a lot of legislators are out taking credit for solving the lawsuit. You know, we had this thing go on for 11 years, and there's credit to be had by a lot of people. And I, I think that clearly, the intent, if, if they go back on their word, is gonna...
We know where we'll be.
Yeah, so I, I think we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
When it comes to the budgeting options for special education, you outlined two, or they outlined two options that they're considering, do you know which one they'll probably lean toward?
I don't, I don't know. I think they'll make a recommendation for, I would guess maybe the 19 million, that get, at least keep it consistent with current, with the current percentage, which is 78. I don't know that for a fact, but I think there's some, there's some logic in that. And of course, that's, that's there, the state board's recommendation. Then it, you know, the governor may have a different idea. She may wanna prioritize money for early childhood, or, you know, whatever her priorities are, or, and then, of course, then the legislature has their say. So it's a long ways from happening one way or another. I, I feel confident that at a minimum, we'll get the 7.5 million.
Anyone else?
Will we get that this year, or will it drag out?
It always drags out.
I mean, you said the governor was behind it, and I was hoping the legislative body would be a more, a little bit more caring and realize the urgency of this, that we won't drag it out, it just seems to be...
And I think that's a great message for you folks to deliver to your legislators. And, and I've heard the superintendent and folks tell legislators that, you know, just, you know, the five-year plan having the predictability allows the boards and the, and the staff to plan accordingly. So, I mean, and there's some value in that, efficiently and effectiveness, if you know, you know, if you don't know what you're gonna get on June 28th, and, and the budget, new budget starts on July the 1st, you know, it's hard to be as efficient as you'd like to be. But if you've got plan, if you can plan, and so I think that's one of the values of the five-year plan. It may not be all of what we wanted, but it, it certainly gives us, you know, a roadmap to follow, and we can deal with, you know, problems better if we know what we can expect. So please share that message with your legislator delegation, anytime you see them, that's a great message.
A bill for clarification, we're, we have it now. The potential is July 1, 2020, it drops off.
Right.
But we have it now.
Right, we have the second, yeah, we have the second year, basically. So we'll be dealing with the next year.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, we appreciate it. It's good to know, so that we can at least try to work and plan, so that we can put some things in, into effect, so that it can affect our children within the school district. So we thank you, and we look forward to you coming back and keeping us updated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will have the reports coming from our superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Covington, thank you.
Madam Chair, board member, superintendent, we're gonna bring Lee up and give you the update for the month on our bond projects.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Ford and Dr. Faust, Lee here, Lee Moore? So we'll get kicked off here with some monthly updates for construction. So the first one is J.C. Harmon. You can see a couple pictures there from the inside. We've been able to take down our, our permanent waterproofed wall as we've, we're now enclosed. The picture you there, see of the exterior, all glass is in, even the, the few plywood pieces that were still not in when we took the picture. So I had an opportunity to visit this job last week, looking really good. We were getting inspections last week, and we should start hanging drywall this week, and, and on course to be complete in December, and, and turn it over to you, break. Next project, West Park Elementary School. This is at the west, the old west middle school site. As you can see there, last week, they were wrapping up all the pre-cast for the storm shelter at the gymnasium, and that's the pictures you see there. We have since then started pre-cast on the architectural around the rest of the building, the steel structure is complete. By the end of the month, we should have pre-cast around the entire skin. We've also got a lot of masonry complete inside. You can see we've started some, some light overhead roughing and also metal studs and framing. We're planning to have roofing and windows, majority, most of those complete by the end of November, so we're trying to get dried in for, for the winter, so. Also gonna get a little bit of site work going this fall as well. Last project here is Carlby Bruce. This is our new middle school at the Northwest Middle School Site. As you can see in the pictures, we've got the structure, structure will be 100% complete, and when I say that, steel, this week. Pre-cast shows up on Monday, that's for the exterior skin, so we've got about 18 days to put pre-cast on around the skin, and then kind of the same drill, trying to rush to get windows on and, and roof on, and, and try to get this thing dried in before old man winter hits, so. And you'll see a lot of masonry that we've got installed as well, so going well as well. We've got the bond budget tracking report, there has been no change in this from last month. We are in the process of bidding about, about $10 million for the work over the course of the next couple of months, so those numbers could tweak a little bit, and that'll be the next round of updates for that. Overall, we've got $128 million of work put in place through the end of September, so that's 72% of the contracted work. Like I said, we've got about $10 million left to bid out this fall. And then the last attachment is just our, our monthly update on our outreach events, and we've got a few of the past months included on there. And then the majority of the, the upcoming events are pre-bid meetings for the packages that are out to bid, and associated with the, meetings associated with the bid stuff, so. That's all I've got for tonight, are there any questions?
Any additional questions?
That's good.
I just wanted to say that I drive by Carl Bruce, and it's amazing just to see the work that you all are doing, because even with the neighborhood in that area, the people are so excited at seeing growth. And so I just wanted to say, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Okay, we are now ready for our community comment, and that is by, I'm going to say Ms. Cece, because I don't want to mispronounce your name. Before you do come, want to make sure that you understand that there are some qualifications, some things that will be required of you as you go through this. I want to make sure that you understand that you do have three minutes, and when you come forward, we'd like for you to give your name, your address, and your phone number. And if there's anything that you would like to pass out, you could give it to Dr. Linkus, and he will see to it that we do get it. And if a response will be given to you at, by someone from the school district to let you know the response to what you're bringing forth to us for today. Thank you. May go ahead and...
My name is Tassir Mank, and I live in Wanda County. Can you guys hear me, because I always say I talk soft?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say, as a child, my grandmother used to set an appointment, and we would walk into the superintendent's office to voice her concerns or comments, compliments or whatever, and I was unable to do that, so that's how I ended up here. I volunteer at a few of the different schools in the school district. My kids go to a couple of schools, and then also I have nieces and nephews. And what I see at the schools most of the time is heartbreaking. I asked some other parents to come here with me, but they said that they figured nothing would really change, or you guys wouldn't do anything. I decided to come anyway. At one of the high schools, there's roughly 1,700 students and one officer, and a shortage of teachers, unless that's changed in the last week and a half. At another high school, there's roughly 800 students and with four officers. There's something wrong with that picture. When we have residents from our community who are ready and willing to work for our children and who have applied for the positions. There's also a shortage of teachers throughout USD 500, who, we also have qualified people in our district who have applied as well for those positions, and some of those applications still say pending, even though they've had a phone interview. Another one was for a human resources training who applied in June. The application is still saying pending while they meet all of the qualifications for the position. What I've observed from the board members when I come here is I see kind of like a competition or what I call a battle of credentials. I don't see, if you can't agree on anything for our children, then how are our children gonna be helped if, if we have this thing going back and forth? And I'm not here to down anybody, I'm here to offer help. Like I've called the schools and the police department and offered help with people applying for the positions, and some of the people who have recently applied, apply because I asked them to, because some of our schools need help. But again, the applications are pending, I don't know why. The last thing I wanted to say was that at the board meetings, when you all vote, sometimes it's unclear, so it, can we do a roll call vote when we vote? Because sometimes you really can't tell who says aye, who says nay, and it's kind of unclear for me, so I don't know if it's unclear for anybody else for that. But those are just the things that I've noticed, not only, and I'm in the schools at least a couple of times a week at most of the schools, for my kids, for my nieces and nephews, and just to volunteer. Yes, ma'am?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. So those are just the suggestions, and if I can help in any way.
Okay, thank you so much. Did you give us your name and your address?
I didn't give my address, but I did give my name, and I said I stayed in Wanda County, I can't give my address, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you please see to it that the board clerk will get that information, since you don't want to do it publicly?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate that. Thank you. We are now ready to go toward the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries, Dr. Faust.
I sit at the Kansas City Board of Education, accept as an informational item a report on the public libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
This is the September report, and I'll just go over the mission, vision, and values... The circulation for September, we circulated 79,934 items. Thirty-three point five two was at the West Winder Library and the rest you could see there. We've also passed out our Prairie Fire Museum tickets. We have a, we collaborate with the museum in Olathe. Our circulation by type again, the AV, that's the DVDs, CDs, and Blu-rays. We've circulated 38.59% of the items. Programs for outreach in September, programs in-house, we had 327 programs in all our libraries. We had 5,940 people attend those programs. In outreach, we had 96 programs and 2,807 people attend those. The, sorry. The E-Library, E-Community's Library in September, we had 13,461 items read. And Tumble Books is the number one checked out on the E-Community website. And databases and sessions that was accessed on our website, we had 2,100 of our database accessed. Ebsco, and that's a research database, is the, the highest that is being accessed. We had the Library in the Park and in front of you, we had a author that signed 300 books for our kids and she personally signed a copy for each of you. And I know some of you have asked for some pictures and stuff. And that's the reason why I, I made a kind of a handout for you guys to just look at the pictures. And you can also go on our website and look at additional pictures from our Library in the Park. We had six individual tables there and I, obviously on your right-hand side, you can see what we've done. The mobile library was there, we had 478 visits on the bus while it was parked there. And, and everything else is there for you to see. We, we had 1,329 people attend, even though the weather was not really in our favor. But we just were thankful that the rain was kept until it was over. Then, we had Homegrown Reads. We arranged a program and invited all local authors to come to the main library because people don't know who the authors are and, you know, I get all these phone calls, can you please put that book in your library? I can't put everybody's book in the library, it has to be vetted, I mean, you know. But the best is to get them all together and we had over 80 people sign up. We only had space for 40. 20 were waiting and they were just praying somebody didn't turn up so that they could come. Unfortunately, that's just the name of the game. But what we're gonna do, we're gonna do an additional program and then invite those 20 that waited for us and then open it up for more. But it was an incredible program and 200 people attended. So, you know, they were just incredible, thankful that we had the opportunity to do that. I just want to go through the handout that I gave you, just quickly. Your first two pages, obviously, is the pictures of the Library in the Park. And there's the link that you can access and if you want to see more. Then the Homegrown Reads, you could see all those authors that came. We attended Silver Day Cities in October as well. And we, the bus was awarded one of the prizes, so we were surprised, you know. It was really a fantastic day, we enjoyed that. But there's a couple of programs that I really would like to, for you to put on your calendar. November 9th, we will have the Scott Joplin Ragtime Concert and Lecture at the main library. And it's presented by a KCK native, Michael Dollman. So, don't miss out on this one. It's a one-of-a-kind event and it'll be at the main library on November 9th at 2:00 P.M. Go over to the next. We will be exhibiting cloth as community and that's the Mongue Textiles in America. Our opening reception will be November 16th at the West Winder Library and it'll run through, from November 10th through January 7th. And of course, Ms. Brownlee Page, Snowflake Swing will be happening in December. And that will be at the West Winder Library, 7:00 P.M. So, grab your dancing shoes and your best retro outfits to swing the night away with some holiday tunes.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? I think it's just wonderful that there is so much being offered through the library for reading purposes as also for the opportunity to, for people to come and live a little bit in the past, look forward to the future. So, thank you so much. Okay, next, Dr. Faust.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education approve the Human Resource Report and Recommendations for the public libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
So, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the Human Resource Report and Recommendation for the public libraries.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The motion has been passed. We're now ready for Dr. Faust, the next one.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the public libraries as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will approve the payment of bills for the public libraries. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now ready to accept the Turner Library Quarter Report.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept the Turner Library Quarter, Quarterly Report as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
I make a motion that we accept the Turner Library Quarter Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Turner Library Quarter Report. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, ayes have it. We're now ready for the reports by the superintendent? Is there one more? Oh, I'm sorry, to approve the temporary construction easement for the Wanda Nation to repair Huron Cemetery Wall.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education approve temporary construction easement for the Wanda Nation to repair Huron Cemetery Wall adjacent to the main branch library as recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary construction easement for the Wanda Nation to repair the Huron Cemetery Wall.
Any questions?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion has been moved and seconded, are there any questions? All those in favor say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion is passed, thank you. Now, we are ready for the superintendent's report.
So, I'm going to do the presentation. I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item a report on the 2018-19 student outcomes data as submitted by David Rann, Director of Educational Research and Assessments, and by Dr. Lynette Hookfin, Deputy Superintendent and is recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools. So, I need to transition.
Okay, thank you, go ahead. I don't want to hit that. I don't want to hit that carefully.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, I am here because I wanted to personally talk about our data and our outcomes. And I know that we have had several conversations. One of the things that, when you were looking for an individual, you were looking for someone who had turnaround experience. And there have been several opportunities for us to see the opportunities in our school. And so, one of the things that I am most proud of are outcomes. The outcomes that our students have done and, you know, more so, when we think about testing, testing has, testing is not about our students. It's actually the end result of what the teachers have taught them. So, let's, I'll take your minds there. When you think about the standards and where do the standards come from? The standards come from the state. And so, the state comes from a curriculum that the state has built and then we provide a district curriculum that feeds into the state. And the teachers are afforded the opportunity to teach the standards and the kids should be doing the verbs in the standards. So, we have some great data and it's no longer, and I think the words were, the superintendent who claims to be turnaround, oh, we're on a move now, district. And so, I had to personally do this just because, I see, Ms. Brownlee Page, we've had conversations and all of you, but this is some exciting news. And we took a trip to Lawrence today. And we had individuals there who were saying, you know, this is awesome. There's gonna be another report that comes out that talks about our TSI CSI schools. And I can tell you now that from that report from the state, where those CSI, those comprehensive schools, for the low performing, those that were TSI, we have nine of those 26 schools coming out this year. It will be released at the State Board of Education. But of course, you know, we're gonna come back and we're gonna celebrate, we're gonna celebrate those principals, we're gonna celebrate the schools. But just know that nine, so we are a turnaround school district.
That's right.
Yes.
So, what you're gonna see today are some outcomes, some graduation rates, some diploma plus information, which it's amazing what the kids did for last year. And I've shared with them, we have to do that times three this year. We have to, we owe it to our children, we owe it to our teachers, we owe it to our community so that we are providing access and support for our students. So, I gave this to you earlier in the year. This came from, I think it was around May, where Beth Foltz, who was the Assistant Director of Assessment, I'm gonna read it, I typically don't read when it's up there, but it says, greetings, I hope you have had a chance to review the state assessment released by KU yesterday. And remember, this was back in May. While the results have not been run through the KSDE Status Calculator, they do provide good information. I reviewed the KCK results at the district level and want to commend your efforts. The movement of students out of Level 1 this year is impressive. So, you're going to see, so this is a celebration, I want you to stop us, ask me questions, ask us questions on how have we gotten here? And I will tell you that we still have a long road to go. However, we're no longer the lowest performing school district in the state. So, the, the email, the email that Beth Foltz sent, this is what accompanies Beth. So, the progression of students out of Level 1. So, I want to start first with our 8th grade. So, the color code, so the colors are the ELA and the ELA are the blue and the orange is the math. So, the, of course, the totals, the amount of students that were tested. And so, the percent that came from Level 1 to Level 2, now take in account that a Level 3 is proficiency. So, we have to get students out of the Level 1, then to Level 2, then they move to proficiency. You know, it'd be great if you, if we were able to take a student, and there were probably maybe about a handful of kids who went from Level 1 to a Level 3, and that was probably a snafu in the testing that had happened. But it's rare that you're gonna get a student from a Level 1 to a Level 3 because of the standard deviation and how it works. And if there are two standard deviations out, what that looks like. So, this is to be commended. So, when we look at grade 3 math in the orange, we had 14.1% of those students who had scored the year before at 14% in Level 1, so they moved to a Level 2. 14% of those students. And so, we're getting closer to grade level and so that's what it tells us. But I want to draw your attention to Grade 8. So, Grade 8, our math, we had 18.1% of our students score at the Level 2. So, that means 18% of those 8th graders, and so I'm gonna answer the question for you. You probably think, well, how did that happen? Good question. So, what happened in 8th grade was really, we had what was called AG1. So, AG1 was a curriculum that the district had used for several years. And so, it taught algebra and geometry together. However, the state assessment was based on 8th grade math. So, what we did, the first thing, remember when I was interviewed, I gave you a plan. And in that plan, I talked about looking at the, the curriculum and instruction. And so, that was one of the first things that we did, we went right to math and I wanted to know, what are we doing for math? So, when we looked at it and we realized that the state was testing over here for this standard, but we were teaching something that had nothing to do with what they were being taught for. So, kids, when I was talking with kids, they were saying, well, there are times that, you know, they were frustrated because they hadn't seen the information, didn't know about the information. And then you, if you're a math teacher, you have to understand, there are very few math teachers that like, like to teach algebra and geometry together. It's usually your algebra teachers and then you have your geometry teachers. So, what we did is we went back and we realigned the 8th grade standards to the actual state standards and taught straight 8th grade math. And so, by just introducing the kids to the standard as it was written, that's what you get. And so, that's what we did for math in that grade, you'll see some others. And so, in the 10th grade math, 10th grade is a little different. High school is different overall because it's gonna take a minute. It's gonna take a minute, however, we did still see some growth. 7th grade across the nation is a tricky grade level. And, but however, we did see some growth. I want to see more growth in 7th grade. And so, what we are doing is making sure that kids are getting access and teachers are being professionally developed. And we're talking a lot about the standards in those areas. So, this one, we talk about progression again, so we break it down by subgroups. The subgroup is equivalent to, it has to be at least 30 students. So, 30 students, so we look at our female, our male, Asian, and so on. So, the F lunch is free lunch, our ELL population. So, again, look at the numbers in math and the numbers in reading. One of the things, if you want to turn a district around quickly, math is one of the quickest areas to turn. Of course, you know that we have our focus on reading and our reading is at the elementary level. Our, not our focus, our reading's at the elementary level. We are looking at 90% in kindergarten, 90% in first grade to get them on grade level. However, when we introduce the information at the level what the state is asking us for, which is grade level material, that's what you get. You get kids who can do the work. So, we need to stop saying that our kids can't do it and we need to stop saying what they can't do because they can and our teachers can do it. Gentle relentless pressure provides success. Gentle relentless pressure provides success. Remember, we're in it for our kids. And so, when our teachers are doing well, when our principals understand the data, the output is our kids. And so, you'll see in that slide, of course, that was through our subgroups here. Okay, so, this is where we're celebrating our students in our schools. So, out of 43 schools, 39 of those schools showed positive gains in the ELA. So, think about that, that's another hand clap. So, we only had, out of those 39 schools, four schools in ELA that did not show growth. Think about that. So, when you think about that big green, so that big green is five percentage points or higher is what they showed in ELA. And then we had five schools, and I want to address that one where they had 10 percentage points or higher. We had some schools to hit 16, 20 percentage points in growth.
That's good.
Yes. So, let's look at our math. Again, look at this. Forty-three schools, 40 showed positive gains in math. Forty schools, we only had three that did not show any gains. This is awesome. This is noteworthy, folks. So, we have to celebrate our schools, we have to celebrate our students. And I definitely want to have each of you walk with our IIOs and schedule with our deputies so that you can see firsthand what we're doing in our schools. But 40, 40 schools showed growth in math. So, look at that 14%. 14 of those schools hit 5% or higher. Again, and then we had four schools that hit 15 percentage points or higher. Again, that needs to be commended, 15 percentage points. So, here we are. So, 14 of those schools were with at least five percentage growth. And so, we, in ELA and math, and so we've listed those elementary schools and, and then we have the middle school, well, secondary school there. And then we have the middle school, well, secondary school there. We also have five schools with at least 10% growth in both ELA and math. And so we wanted to highlight some of those in the largest gain areas. And so one of the schools in ELA, the largest gain was at Hazel Grove with 16.5% growth.
Yeah.
And yes. And our largest gain at, for math was over at White Church with 20 percentage points. 20 percentage points.
Dr. Foltz, I do have a question about that slide.
Yes, ma'am.
So I noticed that the schools are scattered throughout our community.
Yes.
One misnomer I think about our community is that certain areas are getting more attention than others. How was it possible? Or what, what did you see was one of the keys to get 20%? To get six, how, what, what tools were in place? Was there any special magic that, you know? But what do you think was something that really put the pudding together or the cake? What was it in those schools?
So it was realigning the focus. So you have to understand, my passion is growth and turning schools around and looking at giving students opportunities, giving teachers the opportunity to teach what's presented in front of them. So in our principals' meetings, we went all the way back. I know the executive directors at that time were tired, but then I took over those meetings. And so we talked straight data. We had data presentations from David in his office. We did mock PLC meetings of what they should look like. I walked with all of the EDs. As they made it through. We walked all of these buildings. We did what they're calling now pitching the classroom. Before you go in, I wanted to know what was going on in that classroom. And if it wasn't going on in there, why it's not going on there? Looking at the pacing guide, why are we not aligned with the pacing for what the state says where we should be? And so we would go back and then we'd have those conversations with principals. And then it was their job to go back and make sure that the information was correct and students were getting the access to the general curriculum as it was needed. So it was a lot, that's the quick, the quick spill. But there was a lot of time and a lot of meetings. Some of those principals, I can say those that were up there. For instance, I remember the meeting with Quinn Darrow. And I remember telling Stacy, when she came in, because at that point, it was like, she was, I think that her school was maybe 5% or 6% or something. And so the goal was 10 percentage points. And I told her, well, I'm not even going to say that because that's still not good enough. And you'll notice that her school was one of the highest performing schools, and she was on the stage for growth.
Yeah.
So we, when I walked her school, and I can say, and I could actually talk about any of those that was funny, White Church was really hilarious. But when I walked Quinn Darrow with her, I'll never forget her, we went through every classroom, and it was just the two of us, and we were talking. And I was asked, she was like, well, can I do that? I said, why are you asking me? You're the principal. You are the principal. Why is this happening? And so she was like, well, this is what I need to do. I was like, well, do it. And so I'll never get it as I was leaving. She said, well, will I get something written? I said, you just got it. You got FaceTime with the superintendent and sharing this information with you. And so she has this thing now that she's, they're going to double and they're going to do, and I'm going to have to wear this KU t-shirt. It's like, you know, probably not going to happen.
You're going to wear it.
But yes. So that was one of the, the times where we just talked about the data. And individuals wanted to do it. And the work is hard. I will be honest with you, the work is hard. And, but there are no excuses. The goal is to have an effective teacher in every classroom and an effective principal in every one of these buildings. That's the ultimate goal. But when we can't get there, we have to work with what we have, and we have to get them to that level of effectiveness. The next one, of course, is what I wanted to show you is trend data. So we were able to go back to 2016. I think that's when we first started taking this series of CAP testing. And I wanted you to see where we first started and how we got there. All I'm really concerned about is ELA and where we are. And we've outperformed since 16. So we ended at 18.6 percentage points. That's to be commended.
Yeah.
That's right. That's what turnaround looks like, moving forward, moving forward. The next one, this is where I really like this slide. So I'm going to bring your attention all the way over to my left of it. And so it's the bars. So over here, we wanted to look at district totals. We wanted to look at Wichita. We also wanted to look at Topeka, and we wanted to look at the state of Kansas to see where are we with our proficiency rates as a state? So where we were prior to district levels, we were at 14. Wichita was at 22. I'm sorry, yes, the district, we're the district. We were at 14. Hold that number, 14, last year. Then we were at 22 for Wichita. Topeka was at 24, and the state was at 36. Now proves over just a little bit to 2019. We're now at 18.6. Wichita is at 23. Topeka is at 25, and the state is at 36. We're on the move now.
Right, yeah.
And so it's even better. So if you look at our district totals, so Wichita didn't really have a lot of growth. They didn't meet a half percentage, neither did Topeka didn't meet a whole percentage. But how many percentage points did we grow? We're almost there.
Yeah.
We're almost there. So this is the one that I really, really enjoy watching. So again, this is trend data. And so four years ago, we were at 11% proficient in math. This year, we ended at 17.6%. Our students can learn. So when we have individuals saying they can't do it, they can't do it, the schools are bad, this data proves that we can. So now we have everyone here, everyone's going to have a handout, and they're going to be able to take it out to the community. And so this is how we prove, are you on track? We are on track because look at this next one. This is the one that, so if you, I've already explained it to you, but I just want you to look at Wichita and look at our district. They are the orange. We are now, we are the blue. And if you look at that bar, what does it show you?
Wow.
We've called them.
Yep.
We called them in math. So that is awesome news. And if you'll look over there at our district totals, Wichita actually digressed, and I shouldn't be sharing all their information, but everyone's always throwing shade on our, our school districts. So now, look at our school district. We have 6.2%.
Yeah.
6.2% growth, folks. That's awesome. So the state goal is, of course, is at 32%. And we're, we're going to get there. We have the right mechanism in place. We have the right people in the right positions. We're going to continue to train people. We will continue with the, the pressure because we have to educate our kids. We have, we know what educating our kids looks like for our economic development. It all plays into one. But this is where we are, and we are ready. We are really ready. And I'm going to turn it over now to the, the data, the real data guy. And so I'll have a seat.
Thank you, Dr. Foltz. All right. Thank you very much. He is a little more entertaining than I am, for sure. So at this point, what we'd like to do is go ahead and run through the detailed information by grade level and by subgroup for both subjects, as well as get into some of our other data. Right here, we're looking at elementary English Language Arts, and we see that scores went up at all grade levels in elementary school. At third grade, from 13.9 to 21.2. Fourth grade, 19.7 to 26.9. And fifth grade, from 20 to 25.7.
We just can't have the district clapping. We need everybody out there who's been throwing shade.
At, at middle school, we saw growth across all grade levels as well. Sixth grade up from 12.9 to 17.4. Seventh grade from 12.1 to 13.9. Eighth grade from 8.4 to 10.8. And 10th grade, 11.2 to 12.7.
All right.
When we look by gender, we saw growth amongst both females and males. The females increased from 16.4 to 22.2. And male students from 12.3 to 15.4.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Among our ethnicities, we saw growth among each group. Asian students from 15.5 to 22.1. Black students from 10.3 to 13.5. Hispanic from 14.4 to 18.5. Our other group, which picks up our American Indians, our native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, as well as our multiracial students, increased from 14.8% to 23.6. And white students from 24.4 to 29.5.
All right, yeah.
Among our special populations, we saw growth among each of those as well. ELL students from 6.2 to 8.9. Amongst our special education students, from 7.7 to 14.
Oh.
Almost double. And free reduced lunch students from 13% to 17.6.
Woo.
In math, we showed even more growth. Overall, as a district, we were up 6.2%. If we look at, oh, looks like I messed up and didn't include the right slide somehow. Okay. Well, at elementary, I can tell you that both third, fourth, and fifth went up. Third grade especially went up from around 18% to, I think, around 30. That's where we saw our largest gains. So third grade really, really knocked it out. At middle school, sixth grade went up from 10.8 to 15.5. Seventh grade up from 9.7 to 12.0. Eighth grade from 7.4 to 13.6. And grade 10 up slightly from 8.9 to 10%.
Woo.
So we saw growth in both ELA and math at every single grade level.
All right.
If we look by gender, both females and males showed good growth. Females from 11.2 to 17.2, and males from 11.7 to 18. If we look by ethnicity, Asian students up from 14.5 to 24. Black students from 6.8 to 11.6. Hispanic from 12.3 to 18.2. Our other category, almost double, from 10.6 to 20.2. And white students from 18.7 to 26%.
All right.
And we saw growth among each of those special populations as well. ELL students from 7% to 10.9. Special education from 3.4 to 11.6. And free reduced lunch from 10.4 to 16.9.
Right, yeah.
So we went up in both subjects and every single grade level and every single subgroup, which, last I checked, is, is, is pretty, pretty good. In terms of where we're moving from here, so we shared trajectories to 75% proficiency by 2030, the state goal with you previously. We've kind of updated that trajectory. Now that math has caught up pretty much with ELA, what we're basically looking at is having to grow a little more than 5% in each subject each year in order to hit 75% by 2030. So if we can keep these gains up and sustain them, then we are, are, are really in a good place to be on track to hit 75% if we see those gains continue to, 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 to show. So, yeah, it's like 5.3% a year in math and like 5.2 a year in ELA.
Okay.
All right. Lastly, would like to share some information on our graduation rate that we're currently finalizing, and we'll have a final official result here in a few weeks, as well as some information on diploma plus and scholarships. So our graduation rate, as we've shared with you before, has steadily increased over the previous years. Back in 2014, we were just at 65%. Among our class of 2018, we were up to 73.8. Where we're currently projecting our rate right now, and our office usually provides pretty conservative projections, is around 71.6. We are hoping to find another 89 students in that cohort to at least get it to 73.8, if not more. We'd obviously like to get it up to something closer to 75%. Our final rate will be available probably around the first week in November. We have until the end of the month to basically clean it up. We're looking up students in databases, looking them up over in Missouri, asking schools to look them up on Facebook, try to find these students that have either indicated that they're dropping out or that they were going to go to get a GED, just follow up, let them know about opportunities, as well as our students that maybe didn't even tell our schools that they were withdrawing, really making sure that we track down those students and make sure they're not only safe, but they're continuing their education.
And we're knocking on doors.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Next, moving to our diploma plus endorsements. Keep in mind that our graduating seniors last year were not part of the original diploma plus cohort. They kind of, kind of tagged along with the last two years. Overall, we had 46% of our seniors earn at least one endorsement last year, while 54% did not. 33% of our students earned one endorsement. We had another 10% that earned two endorsements, and then we had 2% that earned three endorsements. If we break that down, first, we'll look at the students that just had one endorsement. Starting with the blue pie, that's ACT. 130, I'm sorry, let me back up. There were 369 students total that had one endorsement. 132 of those students in the blue pie met the requirement for ACT of 21 or higher than national average. Another 63 earned at least 18 hours of college credit. Another 72 earned a industry-recognized certificate. 94 completed an internship, and we had another eight enter the military. If we look at the students that had two endorsements, so there were 115 of those kids that each earned two endorsements, so this pie is representing 115 times two, or 230 total endorsements. Starting with the ACT in the blue pie, 45 students, or we had 45 endorsements in ACT, 63 for the college credit, 57 for the certificate, 60 for the internship, and five for the military. And so this represents, some students may have ACT and internship, others may have military and college credit, and so it's just a varying combination of those. And lastly, our rock stars, we had 26 kids that earned three endorsements. So what you're seeing here is a total of 78 endorsements, 26 times three. 10 of those came in ACT, that blue pie. Moving on to the orange, 24 were in college credit. 23 certificate, 20 with an internship, and one headed off to the military. If we look at all of those endorsements earned, broken down as a whole, you see a nice distribution among the different pies, which is nice, that we're not having all of our kids just completing one or looking for the easiest or what they can get to the quickest. Overall, 187 endorsements earned on ACT, 150 on college credit, 152 with a certificate, 174 with an internship, and 14 going to the military. This last slide, which is a really, really awesome slide, and I just could not make the numbers big enough. This is showing information from our diploma plus department on the total dollars earned, awarded for scholarships. As you know, we have college partners that award scholarship dollars based on a student profile. This last year, we had 23 total partners, the most we've ever had across the years of diploma plus. The blue bar is showing you the year one scholarship dollars for the first year, and then the orange is the total amount available for renewal, for renewable scholarships, assuming the students stay and, and progress. So as you can see, in previous years, we had some really, really good numbers. But this last year, they're even better. We went up from having kind of around 15, 18,000 in year one scholarship dollars to, for students that are entering college this school year, over 30 million. And those renewable dollars up from 56 million to 88. So you're seeing that pre, last, the previous year was 75 million, and we are up to over $120 million in scholarship dollars awarded.
Woo.
And that is it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. I'm happy to answer any questions about the data that you may have.
On the scholarship money awarded, do we kind of track them to see? I know we're just getting this. But will we follow to see if they're successful? And do they graduate? Do we keep those kind of numbers?
Yeah, so we've had a variety of conversations, and anybody else that wants to chime in on this, please do. But the first thing that we find is that the, we probably have 40, 50% of our graduates that go to post-secondary go to Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And so what we're looking at is even putting a staff member on campus to specifically follow up and work with those students, knowing that that's where the largest chunk of our kids go. Because we do want to support that through, you know, we can't just tell these kids that college is the answer and then send them off without, you know, supporting them through that process. So we've had some initial discussions around that, as well as once... around that, as well as, once hopefully we get that rolling, then partnering with the other larger, kind of where our kids go, K-State, KU, UMKC, because I think having a person, you know, on campus, meeting regularly with the students to ensure that they're staying on track is important, because, you know, colleges will just, hey, as long as your check cashes, they're fine with whatever you do. So, we want to make sure that we're...
Makes sense.
I, I get that, but my concern, I want to see them graduate, and I'd like for us to be bold. This is excellent. I'm not knocking anything that's been presented. So, please take it in the spirit that is given. But I would like to see us be able to tout and say, with Diploma Plus, that we have fifty kids, I'm shooting for fifty, at least to start with, who have an associate's degree, not one. And again, it's not to knock anything that's been said here. It's excellent. But let's get more of them to graduate. We get the money, but I'd like to see them actually come out with a degree, something tangible in their hands, because they're going to need all they can get. You know, be multi-talented. You can fix an air conditioner, but I got an associate's degree, and I can do this, and I can, I'm multi-talented. And that's what we want them to do. So, again, not to knock the spirit, because this is awesome. But we want them to have more. There's too much potential here.
Yeah, I think you make a key point. So, the, the data that we've presented shows us moving the needle on student achievement.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily translate to changing economic outcomes for Wyandotte County. How we do that is through our Diploma Plus, making sure the kids are successful, the kids are getting those well-paying jobs here in Wyandotte County, and they're not coming from out of the county. I think if we really do what you say, we can really see the median income for Wyandotte County residents increase, and that's how it's done.
That's right.
You know, we set those expectations for high student achievement very early, so they know it's important. And then, as they transition to high school, really emphasize the importance of not just graduating, not just going to college, but being successful in order to change economic outcomes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I have a que, oh, were you done?
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for making that point.
Yes, this is so exciting. So, what changed between twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen in these scholarship dollars? How were we able to get that number up to such a high number? What opportunities changed? What, what situations occurred to where we were able to get this money to students? Because as you said, we can send, we can graduate them, but we want them to be able to go to college without worrying about paying for it. So, what did we do?
I would say that, and good afternoon, I'm Dr. Bill Borver, and the director of the Diploma Plus department. I will say what has changed is the restructure in our department with how the resources and talents that we use within central office, how they have been allocated to the buildings to work with our counselors, to work with the lead CCCs, and the partnerships with the universities. So, the number of university partnerships increased. But I will also say that a serious and intentional effort to make sure that when we send the transcript file to the university, it's for all of our kids, not just for some. It's for the entire senior class at a particular high school, and we do that for all five high schools. And so, we ask universities to partner with us to look at the potential, not just on the transcript, but look at the things that are happening in our schools, the activities that our students participate in, the internship and externship experiences that our students have, to look at the whole student and really give that dollar amount based on the whole child. And so, we have a lot of students, as you see the academic data moving up, that impacts the number of scholarships that our students receive. And so, ACT scores are higher, GPAs are higher, and so, universities are willing to partner with us to take a chance on our kids.
And what about athletics? So, do athletics play a role in this? Are they getting athletic scholarships as well? Have we seen that?
I'm sure they're counting.
She's new.
For the eighteen, nineteen, this is just the academics with the, with our scholarship initiative. Those will be, the academic scholarships will be added.
Oh, good.
So, this is just what universities have offered our students. This is not individual scholarships, that students have an opportunity to go to, go and be a part, looking for the Coca-Cola scholarships, local scholarships in the area. This is just what universities have offered us to date. This number will increase by leaps and bounds by the end of the school year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Faust. We are pleased with the results of the growth. Thank you.
And we will replace the, the slide. That was, I'll take the heat on that. I was Mr. Miyagi on that one. When we were going through this, he and I were practicing. I was like, no, that slide doesn't work. Fix this one, do that. And so, when it's posted on the website, we will switch it to make sure that you have the right one, because that, I will say this, elementary math held it down for us. Those elementary schools, even though they were complaining, you remember, the, the teachers were complaining about the, the math adoption that knew, but they taught that math, like it was no one else's business but theirs. There was a clear focus on that elementary math, so that is to be commended. So, thank the teachers, thank the principals, thank the executive directors for the hard work.
And Madam President, can we utilize every form of media that we can to get the word out about the scores? We stopped posting the scores. No one really knew, and if we're doing this, and we are, so maybe we can clear up, as forty-five would say, we don't want fake news, but let's utilize what we can to get the word out, you know, with every form, because everybody, even though this is the twenty-first century, everybody doesn't have a computer. So, we may have to utilize the newspaper, the radio, it was good, the television stations were here. Let's get the word out, because we got to be excited about what we're doing.
Right.
And if we're not excited, then we're in a world of trouble. So, we got to wake people up. We still are work in progress.
Yes.
But we still want to do all that we can and let people know, because we stopped telling the story. When the story wasn't good, we just mummed and hummed alone. We got something to tell. You know, it's like that old song, go tell it on the mountain, let's tell it. This is our story.
Well, and that's what the purpose of today was about, to start making sure that the word and the information gets out. And we have our communications department, they're going to take it to the next level and make sure that the public, the community, knows about it.
So, I can say that there's a letter already prepared, so state legislators are going to get, you'll get another letter. The state senators are going to get letters, because what we wanted to do is literally share with them, you know, we have this, this lawsuit, Schools for Fair Funding, so we wanted to make sure that they understood what they were voting for, even though we came to a realization. But we wanted them to show, to see how that money is impacting the growth in our, our school districts. So, they're going to get it. Local media, they're here, they're going to do some things, and it will be on all of our social platforms.
Thank you. So, now, we're ready for the, accept the report on school attendance areas and capacity concerns?
Good evening, Nick.
We'll do it all, we'll do it all after.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to bring to you some information just for informational purposes on some areas that we think down the line that we need to really delve into. And I have Ms. Miller here with me to go over some of the data. But just to highlight what's up on the screen, you see the Chelsea boundary, and we have a issue there at that school with overcrowding, but it's not an easy fix, that you can just fix one boundary. And so, just for informational purposes tonight, we're going to just give you a little high-level data on, on some situations that we have at our elementary schools. Lenore?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lenora Miller. I'm Executive Director of Operations, and I've brought some information to you this evening that is causing concern down in the Chelsea area. We've provided some kind of a high-level glimpse at just that particular area. It's not a cluster. It's just those schools that are surrounding the Chelsea attendance area. And so, if you, I don't know if you have the ability to zoom in on your map, but Chelsea is in the green, I'm sorry, the yellow, and then I've labeled each school boundary for you. Thank you. And all those little stars represent a family that has a kindergarten through five-grade student in that area. And this has been, Chelsea's been a concern for quite some time in the last probably seven years, but it's gradually increased in that area. Now, we're finding that the population is actually growing even heavily in that area, which is impacting the feeder schools the, after they leave Chelsea. So, the, the middle school that they go to, then the high school that they end up at. And if you'll, if you recognize that Wyandotte has over seventeen hundred students, that particular reason is why. So, originally in the bond, just a little bit of history for you. We had projected that Chelsea would be at a, a heavy capacity, but we did not, we could not identify new things that came along in the last five years. One of our solutions was when we, the team, decided to build West Park Elementary School, we would be able to absorb some of that Chelsea area, hopefully. But that's a transition that is going to take a, a higher level of understanding, bigger than our house, to see what has changed in our community. And I'll give you an example. I know that Frank Rushton is way down on counts, and KU area has grown tremendously. Those families near Eaton and Cambridge have moved out, and commercial buyers are coming in and buying that property and making anywhere from a two-hundred-thousand-dollar K home to four-hundred-thousand-dollar K and bringing in interns in that area, which is driving enrollment down for that. They're a locked-in area, and I brought more maps to you. I didn't know how deep you wanted to get in an overall look. But right now, this is the main concern, and we really need some guidance from some outside entity for what is the best scenario for what we can do for our kids. We certainly don't want to raise classroom size of kids per teacher ratio, and, you know, we don't want to disrupt families as well. But we have got to get a hold on this, or it's going to get out of hand, so. So, the surrounding schools you'll see is Francis Willard, Eugene Ware, just kind of William Allen White, which is going to have a new West Middle, West Park Elementary School, and then Kerr Rutherford and Douglas, McKinley, and then Amy Pearson. They're not going to be a lot of help for us, so we're going to have to really do some high-level brainstorming on this. So, for, as for informational piece for you, if you have any questions?
How would Parker, are we close figuring to this? Is that a option of reopening Parker to take some of the new Chelsea?
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't get all your question. Go ahead.
What if we reopen the Parker Elementary? Would that take some pressure off of the new Chelsea?
Absolutely not. Parker is not at a, a place where it could accommodate a large group of kids.
Okay.
And the condition of the building, we have, we've got to take care of some needs in there, and I think there's some other planning that maybe Dennis would like to share with you if we need to.
Okay.
It wouldn't, wouldn't be enough.
Wouldn't be enough. Okay.
You, you mentioned that Frank Rushton is a locked-in area?
Well, it's at the bottom of our entire school district boundary, if you can kind of just picture. It's not on this particular map, but picture our boundary like this. It's cleared down by County Light Road.
Right.
Which is right on the edge.
Yeah.
And so, the only other school that, that is in that area is TA Edison, and so, we can't pull from one unless we think about the riptide that comes, the ripple effect always happens. If I take Carol's seat, then Carol's got to move to the next seat.
Right.
And then so on and so forth, and then you have to think about what is happening afterwards. What happens to those fifth graders when they go to the next school? And this is the problem area too, because if we changed, considered, or whatever the findings were, if we change and consider Chelsea may be feeding into the next middle school, that's Gloria Willis. And that's going to be a problem, because there is no way that they can absorb that much more kids, so.
So, what is your, do you have an alternative as far as what we should do?
We do. We have something in mind. Maybe Dennis would like to speak.
Well, we don't have nothing totally fleshed out now, but we're going to do a contract with an outside source and get a demographer in to help us with this study. And we really going to have to do a comprehensive study, so that we just don't make a rash decision just to fix one school. But that's more to come.
And so, when is that, when is that going to happen, the next couple of months, or when do, when is our goal time to get this resolved by next school year, or what is the timeline here?
Well, that would be my hope for next school year, because we wouldn't want to disrupt any type of learning during, during the middle of the school year, but to have, we'd have a focus group and all of those things that are, that are in place, but yes, for next school year, because we're at, for new Chelsea, we have made-up classrooms in there where it's not actually a full classroom. I would welcome you actually go visit. I would, I would really want you to go visit that before you actually weigh in on it, because it's, it's tight over there.
It is.
So, this demographer, are we going to have them do, look at the whole district?
Yes, the whole district.
The whole district, okay.
And what is the cost, estimated cost of that?
I don't know right now.
You have, I mean, you've...
I have no idea.
Well, as you consider, have you identified some consultants?
There was a gentleman that worked for the county, I think it was the county, was the last demographer that we had.
For the UG.
For the UG. So, I have no idea what he was charged.
Have you researched what he charged the UG?
We actually reached out to that very same demographer prior to the bond referendum.
Because didn't we have a presentation?
Yes, you did.
That's...
And, and the board, I don't believe, accepted the proposal at that time, because we, we felt that internally, we could resolve some of the immediate issues and then have the community vision team plan through. But now, this is just a small shift, a larger shift than what we had anticipated in that area, in that growth. And if you can zoom back out, who's ever running the control for me, if you just look even at that bottom area where Whittier is, next to my corner tab, it's exploding. It's, all of that area is exploding.
And, and also, Dr. Faust, as our school district improves in scores, improves in reputation, I think that we'll have to consider that as well, because families may, there was an article about Kansas City, Kansas being on the boom, and more people are looking to move here to Kansas City, Kansas. So, I think we have to take that into consideration as well. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager. And additionally, Catholic Charities is actually promoting that area. Highly recommended to move into. So, we're seeing a lot of shift.
Yeah. Thank you.
And let me return to, I, I don't, I think she shifted before you had an opportunity to answer. Did you see what the UG was charged for, for that study?
I don't exactly recall. I do have that information still, and I'd be happy to provide it as a glimpse, because it was a very twenty-two-thousand-foot level view at all of our school district, but they never got to the point of making any recommendations. That was the hurdle where we stopped them, because of the...
I remember.
You remember?
Having that presentation. Thank you. And Dr. Faust, I have been to New Chelsea.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll expect to hear more.
Yes.
Once you get the information, so that we can move forward with a decision.
And we will bring the contracts back to the guys before we initiate.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I'd be happy to share my other maps with you, if you're interested. I can provide them to Susan, if you want to see the district as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're ready to approve varsity tutoring proposal for middle and high school students?
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve varsity tutoring proposal for middle and high school students as submitted by Dr. Lynette Hook, Van Deputy Superintendent, and it's recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam President, the board, Superintendent Faust, and all the great people in the audience. This is an informative presentation in hopes to seek your approval for additional support in the area of Matematicus, to ensure that we continue to transform KCKPS.
Mm-hmm. I move in.
All right.
Okay.
So, what we've done, we have identified that we do need additional support for our high schools and middle schools in our district in terms of the support that is needed for in terms of the support that is needed for our scholars in math. So in terms of our high schools, we know that support should be provided at all of our high schools, including Sumner High School. In terms of our middle schools, we have identified middle schools who need additional support based on test scores. So what is the objective? The objective is to establish a Wednesday Academy in hopes to provide additional support to targeted students. We've got to be innovative here, and we have to understand that we can utilize our Wednesdays to support our scholars who do not have to go home during our half-day sessions. And so we don't want to tax out our teachers. Our teachers are participating in professional development activities, and they are working on their pedagogical skills in order to increase our math achievement scores. So why not take the time to have our scholars in a Wednesday Academy at four of our, of our high schools, have seventy students, and at Sumner High School, to have twenty students to remain after school and receive additional support using a digital, a digital platform? So we did our homework. We searched for potential partners to see who could provide the support that is needed. We started in the KC area, of course. Our potential partners, we reached out to Khan Academy. This is a virtual and free academy, but it did not offer tutoring services. We reached out to varsity tutors, Mathnasiums, Study Point, Tutainers, and Sylvan Learners Centers. Again, we reached out. Some of our potential partners did not reach back. Some didn't have the capacity to do what we need them to do. So in seeking your approval, we found a company that is a potential partner, again, seeking your approval, with a reputation that is capable to support our scholars. And they're very responsive in terms of the questions that we ask, the specific questions that we ask in terms of how can we provide support to our scholars. So they're the largest tutoring company, company in the US, founded in 2012. And what's most important to us is that we make sure that they have a high success rate in large districts. They're capable in terms of the extended turnaround, the hourly investment that we're looking at. And the most important thing here is the ability to manage the support for a large number of students. There's no limit on the sites that are served, and there's no limit on the virtual services that can be provided. So picture having a tutor-like program set up as if students were actually Skyping, if that makes sense. That's how I can better explain it to you. So having a virtual platform, a digital platform, where students can actually ask questions in a recorded session if they choose to have it recorded. So this is what we proposed, and we can always change the amount of hours and the number of students that will receive these services. But again, if we plan to continue the path of moving the needle of achievement in our district, we're going to have to be creative. We're going to have to understand that there is a critical need of shortage of teachers in the area of mathematics. We're going to have to understand that our teachers do need support with increasing their skills to support students. The new way of teaching math is different. And so not only do we need to provide our teachers with professional development, we also have to understand that our students learn differently. And so digital is the way to go, along with the support in the classroom. So how can this work? We can purchase the amount of hours that will be provided to our students. And if, our students will be online on Wednesdays. So just imagine having our students to have an adult in the room who is supervising. This is a one-on-one program, meaning that if we have thirty students to remain after school at one particular high school, every student will have their own tutor online. Picture having a Skype-like environment where the student can hold up the assignment and asks any specific question that he or she may have about the lesson. And if the student needs to go back and say, "I didn't quite understand that very well, so let me repeat the session." Again, it can be recorded. This is what it could possibly look like, having the tutor's face presented online as the student asks the questions. So the action steps. So we did reach out to the company to see how much this could cost. We will communicate with students and families if you decide to approve this particular program. And what we did think about ahead of time, the transportation that will be required for our students to have after they attend their Wednesday session. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Is this optional for the student?
Well, we're going to start with students who are identified based upon data. Of course, we want this for all students, but we're limited. And so what we want to do is we want to reach out to identified students, and then we will open it up to students who want the extra support if we don't get the exact number that we need at each high school. Again, we're starting with seventy at four of our high schools and twenty at Sumner. And so let's just say if we reach out to eighty students and we don't receive feedback from fifty, we're going to continue to reach out and open it up to more students until we get to the number seventy. Now, of course, the number can be larger, but we want to start with this small number, because like I informed the president of the company, if we don't see results, we won't call you again. And so we've got to start with a law, a smaller number to ensure that this particular platform is the way to go. Again, reaching out to different partnerships and seeing what could work best for our students. We felt that one-on-one support could definitely help our students with the areas in which they need the most support with in math. So to answer your question, we will open it up to more students. We shall open it up to more, especially if this program pans out to be successful. Yes?
You can count my daughter in as one, so that would be sixty-nine, no. I'm excited about this. Previously, and, schools have been doing this on their own.
Yes.
Quite honestly, they've identified students who wanted to get ahead in math and actually had some after-school sessions. So I love the idea of, and of course, you know, people may think, well, students may not want to do this, or focus, or what have you. Guess what? We have put our students on track.
Yes.
And when they start seeing success, I'm confident that seventy students in the school will be able to pick that up and run with it. I do have a question. So Sumner students, sometimes Sumner is not included in us thinking about, hey, we may, we may need tutoring for them, et cetera. I know, like, for instance, they have a lot of physics teachers that are out. Of the building. I know there's some areas for improvement in math. So why did you consider only twenty for Sumner? What is the extra support they, will we give them, so they too can succeed to a higher level that we know that they're capable of?
That's a great question, Dr. Jaeger. And again, this was based upon data. And so, yes, they should be included, but they had the highest math scores. And so we felt that our other high schools, based on data, needed more additional support. We've got to remember that we have a lot of students who are behind. And in order to, to, to fill those gaps, we've got to move quickly with students who are two and three grade levels behind, and that wasn't the case at Sumner. So the twenty that we will service at Sumner, we'll see how it works if you decide to approve this particular contract. And then, of course, you're going to see more students who want the extra support, but we've got to start somewhere. So this was based on data.
Thanks. And next, in the contract, it did talk about billable hours and minimum billing. So say we have fifty at each school, or seventy, fifty, et cetera. Is, is it my understanding that the billing will fluctuate based upon that? It's not set at that maximum capacity?
Right, exactly. You are correct. And we also have to consider transportation and making sure that our students get home in a timely manner. Of course, you want this program to continue to run, but Wednesdays would be the best days. And again, we have to consider transportation, because our other buildings use the buses as well. So we've got to think about all of that. And so Wednesdays is our best bet for now. And in the future, we'll take a look at what it could possibly look like in terms of adding more hours, depending on our transportation.
Thank you. Could you, could you help, go back to slide on page fourteen, please? Easy for you to get back there? Responsive, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So I'm a little familiar with the, with the procedure. Now, you said there is a staff person in the classroom with.
We have to have an adult that is present in the room. You are correct, for supervision purposes.
What role do they play?
So the role of the adult in the classroom is to ensure, of course, safety takes precedence overall. And so we want to make sure that the adult is present to provide supervision in the classroom. The online tutor is the person who's in charge of the instructional delivery. And so you can have a teacher in the classroom, you can have an aide in the classroom, as long as it is an adult. Who is responsible for supervising the students.
So it's not a math teacher in the room?
It is not, but that doesn't mean that our math teachers cannot be a part of this and participate. But we do want, we don't want to tax out our teachers, meaning that we want them to participate in professional development sessions that are crucial to their, to developing their skills on Wednesdays. We don't want to count them out, but they can definitely be included on Wednesdays if they choose to do so with the permission of their principal.
The original concept is that an adult in the room?
Yes.
So the one and a half hours per week, is this a sane time at each location?
Yes, due to Wednesdays at our high schools and middle schools. So it's during the half-day session, meaning that there will be a group of students who will remain on campus instead of going home on Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question correctly. What time is it in your mind, have you thought about establishing that this, this tutoring session starts?
So it would be immediately after this dismissal on Wednesdays.
Okay.
For our scholars, and of course, it depends on the, the building time at each campus.
Okay. So, so the, I mean, and, so the feedback is, and you're saying math, these are just general, maybe, math sessions?
Math sessions that will be based on the concepts that have to be mastered. Now, we won't just put any tutor in front of our scholars and say, "Let's just work out math problems." We are about the standards, and we are about our scholars mastering the standards. So in terms of identifying scholars, you're talking about scholars who have been identified based upon the fact that they haven't mastered concepts.
Okay.
That have to be mastered in order to be successful on the state assessment.
Okay, so the, the, the package essentially, the curriculum will have units that fall into the aligned curriculum?
Correct. And the reason why this is a company that we really took a great interest in is because they're willing to teach the concepts that we want them to teach. And so usually you have programs that are out there that have their own curriculum, and they want to guide students in their own direction. But this is KC KPS, and in order for us to continue to transform and do what we did last year at a higher level, we have to ensure that the company conforms to our standards. And so that's why we're particularly interested in them.
I guess my questions are more on the practical level. So this, this room has five students, let's say there are five students. And there's more capacity, but these five students have been identified.
Yes.
Now, let's say these five students have challenges in five different areas.
Yes.
So that these programs, I, I load up into X program.
Yes.
And, and Sally loads up into Y program. Is that the capa, do they have the capacity to do that?
They do. And not only that, what we're going to do is we're going to initiate looking at the data for our individual students who have been identified to participate. And so that is crucial, because you don't want to sit a student in front of a, of a tutor and not know what they need. And so I'm looking for the guidance of the teachers. I'm looking for the guidance of the principals to support us with this work.
And is, is, so that what they do in this Skype environment is directly related to what they are required in the classroom?
Right. And remember, this digital platform has the capacity for our scholars to show the work that they're working on. So if they have the ability to do that, then the tutor, it's like a picture. It's like using Skype, but they can take a picture of it, and then they can have a copy of the work in front of them as they're guiding the individual scholars to master the concepts.
One last question.
Mm-hmm.
Voice-to-voice capacity during the session?
Yes. And not only that, the sessions can, or they don't have to be recorded. And that's most important, because sometimes our students don't always get it the first time. And so that is why it's important for the scholar to understand that, okay, I can relax here. And I know that if I don't grasp this concept, if I have a misconception about this particular standard, then I can always go back and rewind. So that's the most powerful piece in this as well. So yes, online, live, not only live, but it can be a recorded session.
And does the teacher get that, the results of that, any data?
The teacher has to be a part of this work, because there's no way that a, a student is being tutored, and we don't track the progress of it. So we're just not speaking about an online platform where a child is being tutored, and we don't track the progress. We've got to be able to track the progress to ensure that the student is making progress, number one. And number two, that this company is best for us as a district.
So how does the outcome, what's, what's the, the tape measure? What's the?
So the tape measure will be the data-tracking progress of our students, having an initial assessment at the very beginning of the tutoring sessions, and then midway as well, and also the end results.
Who's it a report to?
The report will definitely go to our teachers, to the principals, and our IIOs and myself. We're going to monitor this effectively.
And then you track their grades in the regular classroom?
That has to be a part of it.
Sorry, you just didn't tell us the, the little details, and I apologize.
And I appreciate your questions, because that's important. That's so important. And I think that we're doing a better job with aligning our grading system.
Yes.
To say that if a student earns an A in a particular class, that they should be successful on the state assessment. So we're getting there, there's a lot of work to do in that area. But we have definitely put the attention out there that this A has to stand for XYZ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you had mentioned that it was optional. Had you thought about making it mandatory? Because we have quite a few that aren't at grade level, and you almost need them in there to help them.
I agree.
So that they can be successful. But I know that's the whole, but I was just wondering if that ever came up, that maybe we ought to make it mandatory.
We're going to have a strong push on the students who have been identified. We're, we're going to try our best to ensure that they're sitting in those seats. We're going to try our best.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. I had a lot of questions, but it seems as though you've answered them through your presentation. And we do appreciate you pushing this because we're trying to stay on the right track.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I am, okay. All right. Okay.
I, I want to make a motion that we approve the varsity tutoring proposal for the middle and high school students.
Motion has been made. Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The motion has been passed. Okay, we need to, uh, accept the report, approve the approach, that, uh, accept the report for the 2018, 2019 student outcome data that was presented by Dr. Faust.
I make a motion that we accept the report on the 2018, 2019 student outcome data report.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. And then we need to, uh, accept the report for the school attendance areas and capacity concerns. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the report on the school attendance areas and capacity concerns.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the report for school attendance areas and capacity concerns. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We are now ready for our consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to set aside item C. Excuse me. I'd like to set aside item E within letter C. Only item E.
Letter E?
Letter, letter.
Item. I'd like to set aside item, C like cat, and E like easy on letter C. Only those items.
Okay. I got it. Thank you. So, could I get a motion for us to approve the consent agenda, setting aside item C and E?
Of item C.
Of item C.
So, moved.
This, can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda. With those exceptions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
Sure. I just had a question on item C of the first report. What is, what is, um, just a clarification. The unit planning during the summer, are they just now getting paid?
It looks like it's a building, it looks like. Um, I can't speak accurately to it, but it looks like it's a building fund. So, that meant that, um, the school, I guess, did some unit planning over summer and pay them, but they're just now paying them.
They're just now paying them? Okay. And what does PLTW mean?
That's Project Lead the Way.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Did not know that acronym. And then on item E, on approved travel? It's on page, when we get there?
Starts on page 21.
For things that we talked about earlier, the email that we received from Ms. Tushman. Did we not, I guess the question is, did the, has travel to Harris Stow already taken place?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought.
It just happened.
So, I guess my, my question is, maybe on, on some of these items that have varies of the, um, number of days, and I guess for the, I don't know if the public is seeing the same thing we're seeing. There's a chart that has the name of the individual, the, I'll say, the activity, the location, the days traveled, the, the date, and then, of course, the budget. So, in this category, two categories, some of them, I, I would, I would say, Madam President, there's just a, a mistake in the description. If you've already gone to Harris Stow, is this, what is this? Like number 367, or 365, I think, 365. But 3, 367, it just, it's on page 22.
367 is an upcoming recruitment trip to Fort Hays University. Uh, we have, if I'm looking at the item.
Harris Stow in there.
That's 367?
367. University of Kansas, Harris Stow, Wichita State Emporia State Latin Ex Education.
I think what I may have here, um, may not be corresponding with that. But what I'd like to do is, in anticipation of that, I have some additional information that I have in a folder for each of you, and that might clarify that. 367.
Okay.
And then all those. So, KU, uh, is happening tomorrow, and therefore, that has not occurred yet. And so, the individuals that you see that have the University of Kansas, Harris Stow was simply provided as individuals who may attend if we, if we needed to have a substitute.
But I guess my question is, I thought we were told they were already, that has already occurred. So, that wouldn't be in this request, would it?
Not for Harris Stow.
Right. And I guess, Madam President, my, my, uh, objection to approving these items that have Harris Stow in them is that, that's already been, that event has already happened.
Yes, it just happened.
We were already given the information, the individuals who, we already approved the individuals who went. So, this is, you can call it typo, or whatever you want to call it, but that, this, this is not correct.
It was my understanding that we needed to show everything again, and so, that's what we did. In terms of that, to make sure that you had everything in hand. And so, my deepest apologies that Harris Stow is there. Everything else is about to come.
Okay. But you still don't know the days of each of those events? So, that in the, in the category of days, you'd put 10, 15?
I don't need that.
If there's, let's say, 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, 6 or something. That in that category, you would put 6 instead of varies?
If you would like, I can make sure that the amount of days are in parentheses behind each of those, uh, particular events.
Well, it's in the other one. So, that's what I thought was the pattern of reporting.
In the past, what we have been able to do, and I thought in terms of one of the questions, is that we have a list of individuals that was vetted, uh, with Dr. Hookfin and Ms. Tushman in order to make sure that we could comply with each of these events. In the past, we also presented one list so that that would allow that if anyone could not attend that particular event, we could simply move to the next individual on the list. And so, that's why you see this here, so that we would not lose any of the fees in order to attend those events, nor lose the interview schedules for any of those events. And that's why we ask for each of the names to at least be approved, that if they couldn't attend one of the events they had signed up for.
I understand that.
They would be able then to move to the next event. And so, that's why you see each of the fall semester events by each of their names, so that we could have that.
That's clear. And, and one would think that, then that wouldn't, the potential, let's say, if everybody went every place each time, you would know that it would be 10, 10 days total. Because you know those events, and you know the days that they're held.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so that's, that's my, just my, it, it just seems, um, I don't understand why in that, those, say, potential people.
Okay.
That you have varies, and you don't put the real number.
I would be more than happy, based on what the board would like to see, if you would like to see for all of these events, the total days that each individual could possibly be going, or if you would just like to have, in parentheses, behind each event, that it's a one-day event, or that it's a two-day event.
Um, and previously, we've approved them in clusters. And again, Madam President, uh, you've asked to have questions in advance so that if there are concerns, they can be clearly corrected whether than being surprised here at the board meeting. You've put, we've asked every single board meeting to not be surprised. Madam President, did you know about these corrections to the HR report prior to us being here? For proper correction?
No, I did not.
So, I would ask that we would please look in advance before coming to our meeting, asking for changes to be made, having HR bend over backwards to explain your recruiting. It has not been done in the past. You do not need to tell me, or, or I feel in my perspective, us how many days. It goes back to, you are the director, you know you have a budget, and I truly believe you've done it in the past, year over year, last year, to provide great information relating to recruiting, sending out the right people, documenting everything. So, I thank you for that. But again, my concern, Madam President, is that we would hold up progress. And as a board, if we want to take out the word Harris Stow and mark it from the report, we can mark it from the report and continue to approve it. But what I do not want to see is us to not approve this report because of a minor technicality.
In, in all due respect, we brought, this was brought up at the last two or three meetings, and the same thing was asked. And we were told that this would be corrected, because we want to make sure everything goes accordingly. And it's not like it hadn't been asked, because the question keeps coming up. So, I would like to see the days, and you said it wouldn't be such a hard thing to do. So, if we could put that on there, it wouldn't hurt, because the question keeps coming up. And it's not like it's never been asked before. It doesn't seem like everything is following through completely, because we got part of it done, and we just need to add the days and move on.
Madam President, I'm just asking that the data that we're given, and I'm sure you appreciate that if it's not a correct report, you wouldn't want to be, um, the person, right now, standing in, in place of the director, responsible for giving us reports that are not correct. And so, um, yeah, that's, that's the end of the story. Um, and if, if you have, for me and for us, it would appear that you want the potential approved. If you use it, fine. If you don't use it, fine. But, but when you, but it just, it's not, um, correct.
So, in respect to the days that the board would like to see, again, would you like just the collective amount of days for these entire events that are happening? Or would you like to see the amount of days by the name of the event?
I think it would be easier for the total.
Okay.
Because you're, for, for number 3, whatever, 69, you want us to approve 10 days for that person to do whatever you need them to do without coming back each, uh, let's say, middle of November for an event that is at Fort Hays State. That's what I thought would be, is your intent and your desire to have total, um, approval now. And then spend as you spend.
And then if there's a snowstorm, and they go to 15 days.
Then the snowstorm, you come back and has to five more days of the budget.
No, no. That is not acceptable. I know that we'll probably have to do it, but that is not acceptable. We are not here to micromanage. And I understand the point of what you're saying, but for them not to have a flexibility or room for her as a director to say, "It's a snowstorm, stay over." And it's within the budget. It's not outside of the budget. It's not something that she's bringing new. It is in her budget.
Anyone else? I've been sitting here, listening to everything, and one of the things that we want to do is to make sure that we are open with how we're going to handle and do everything as a school board. Dr. Yeager mentioned as before, we are trying to change the dynamics of how things are being done. Since I've become president, one of the things I've asked is that when we, when the agenda comes out, if there are any questions, to submit that. If that information, mistakes are made, and if the, if the information is there and it may be correct, I think we can collectively try to do it decent and in order to be able to trust that they are going to do it correctly. And I don't think we need to go through such intimate details on things that is a part of the budget of what is allowed for them. We're at an impasse right now, because even if we decide to vote, we don't have enough.
We don't know.
So, therefore, I'm asking us as a board to, let's put in some professional trust to know that they are going to try to do things the way it is supposed to be done, and a mistake may be made. And if that mistake is going to be made, let's just fix it, and let's just move on. Ms. Page mentioned about that in the last meeting that we asked that something be done. But I've also been asking that you submit questions, and it hasn't been, it wasn't done. So, do we nitpick over things, or do we just recognize that a mistake has been made? Suggest that it be fixed so that it doesn't happen again, and let's just move forward? It's not that intimate where it's a major issue, but we just fix it. We have to come, collectively come together to make sure that the things are going to be done. And so, I would ask that we accept, but if we don't vote it through, we're stuck, like we were the last time.
Well, in regard to what you just said, I thought when we left, the information was going to be added. We keep coming back. It's not happening completely. Now, to some, it may seem trivial. To others, people want the detail, and there's nothing wrong with that.
And, and I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, we were told the last time, and the time before that, this would be resolved. Now, to some, it may seem, eh, it's no big deal, but to others, it is. So, it's, in, in the sense that we're supposed to work together, we just got to remember to add that. It was asked, not one time. This keeps coming up, and it's not being done completely.
And, Madam President, I wasn't, um, saying anything to, um, Ms. Folks other than, I thought we approved those trips. We did. And so, the, um, correctness of our reports, for, for you, it may be nitpicking. For us, is if the board approves a report that is incorrect, the board is responsible. Now, you know, we can move on. I've made my point. The point is that, um, you won approval for 10 days.
Yes.
Didn't put it down. Now, we can, we can move forward, but again, I believe what you say, that you're going to do. And so, that's where we are.
What, could I offer a suggestion?
There are seven days that are attached currently to every other place that we need to travel over the next three weeks. Those areas are here. They are listed. Uh, in terms of the days, I now understand that you would like it collectively. If that is really the only thing that may be holding this up, it's seven days. If the board would approve that.
So, to clarify, uh, you would remove Harris Stow and then? So to clarify, you would remove Harris Stowe and then add seven days to which, to University of Kansas, Wichita Emporia, the Latinx education, Lincoln University in Fort Hayes. Is that correct? Okay.
I'd do that.
So I want to make a motion that we approve the travel and remove Harris Stowe from the list and add seven days after each of the subsequent areas that I just listed. And that.
And I would amend that motion to say however many days you require.
Right, okay.
That then tells us you have planned ahead. We've approved the maximum, and if number three sixty-nine stays home because she, he or she had other obligations, you don't spend that money, but it's already been approved.
Do you have that, Susan?
Just amended it.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so the motion has been made to remove Harris Stowe and amend however many days are required for the travel. Did I get?
Second.
Second, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Are you approving also C?
Yes.
And item C?
That was just clarification. Didn't know it was due.
Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. The motion has been carried.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Did we do E?
No, we need to pay the bills.
Okay, so now we're ready for payment of the bills?
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills that submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and that submitted by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
I move we pay our bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay our bills. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. The ayes have it. Now ready to accept the second read and discussion proposed with changes to board policy, IHA grading system. Any comments?
So there was a question last board meeting about how many grades should be entered based on the nine weeks. I, when I visited schools this week and went around to elementary, middle, and high schools to have a discussion as it related to grades, and talked to the principals, talked to some teachers and things of that nature. It, it's amazing, Dr. Faust, what I found. The higher performing schools, a lot of teachers said, oh, that's not a problem. I do way more than ten. Based upon the report of the lower performing schools, it was like, well, I may not have as many. I may get them in as I can. I may enter them right at the ninth week. But overall, when asked if required to put in at least ten days for our parents to be able to know, for our kids to be able to know, how much of a stretch would it be to put ten grades in the gradebook at the end of nine, by the end of nine weeks? They said it's possible, because they grade in three areas, from my understanding. Three areas before they do their learning activity while they're learning, and then the outcome of them actually doing it. So they too are tracking. A lot of schools are tracking. So ten, based upon conversations and discussions, appear to be a fair number. Now, elementary school, that's slightly a little bit different, because elementary schools, as we know, they're in one classroom. The teacher's assessing many things over the course. So elementary school may, you know, not enter them every week, but by the end of that nine weeks, they would have at least ten grades in.
I would actually want to say that as a parent and as a teacher, I enter grades weekly, because that's how we make sure that, one, we are measuring the standard that has been taught. And they teach a standard every day, or they teach a concept. I shouldn't say necessarily standard, a concept on a daily basis. So you want to use the grade as a measurement tool. So I don't know if that would be justifiable for a teacher. If a teacher's wanting to come in defense, if a parent says, well, my child has this, you have no leg to stand on to say that I presented to you these opportunities. So I think we probably want to, as an elementary teacher, I can say this, as an elementary teacher, I sent folders home weekly. And so they were graded papers weekly in that folder that I asked for parents to review, to sign, to give feedback. And that's how I created my small groups for differentiated learning. So as an educator, I mean, as an elementary teacher, that's how it was done. And we have to provide
Exactly.
Parents with progress. How, how are their children doing on a daily basis, or on at least a weekly basis?
Any other comments?
Have we had any response from the NEA on it?
I have, I haven't received any. It was just questioned, hey, are you going to get the teachers involved if it gets bigger? And my response was to, I only had one teacher respond or send me a note and say, are you going to ask teachers? So I did go out and talk, like I said, as I went to the schools, I did talk to various ones to get their input. But this, right now, is just the baseline. This is just the bare minimum, saying ten grades, nine weeks, period. It's not any further than that. But I would say, as we move further as a district, we do need a firm committee to build this thing out a little longer. And as I looked with other districts, there was fifteen, ten pages, twelve pages, so we will eventually need to build that out.
So I, I mean, I agree. I believe that we need to put teachers in, in front and see it, because it was just brought to my attention that elementary schools don't submit progress reports. So the first time that a parent sees how a child is doing is at the report card level. That's, that's actually not good, because you have nine weeks, and at that half margin, your child, you don't know. And I just didn't know, honestly. That's new to me as a teacher and one who still considers, I'm still licensed as a teacher. Keeps up with my, my license. I would never do that to a parent. I would never want a parent not to know how their child is doing. So for us not to have progress reports going out, secondary does it, but elementary schools don't. And I need to, I guess we need to put that into a policy also, that everyone submits progress reports, even in our, so in our elementary schools, I know that we're supposed to do progress reports for sped students. And so that's actually by law, they're covered under that. So we have to make sure that we are doing that. But, you know, folks, we have to be diligent about the work that we're doing, I think. And I'll just say it, as intentional as we are about the finances, we have to be intentional enough about the academics and make sure that we slow down, look at it, process it, go back and forth over it. But there should be no wiggle room over grades and progress of students.
And Dr. Faust, what I found too is that at the middle and high school level, when you have that enrollment for parents, there's infinite campus people, counselors with infinite campus sitting down, signing in their student. At the elementary school, there's none. So when they open house, there was no one at elementary school that said, hey, do you know your infinite campus password? Let's sign you up. Let's get you enrolled, kind of a thing. So I think helping in that area, just like we do in middle and high schools, if we could have a way for that parent open house, just that be the expectation that parents are helped sign up for infinite campus, what it looks like, explaining it, would help in that efforts too. So that although grades are entered, someone has to look, you know, parents should be looking at it. And that's part of our educating the parents to look in infinite campus for all, all grade levels.
And I just assumed that they were recording grades and doing progress reports at the elementary level.
Well, I just wanted to say on the secondary level, I can speak for that. After teaching thirty years, I think it should be more than ten, because parents are complaining. They, we tell them to go online, check their kids' grades out, and some, I'm not saying every teacher. So whoever's listening, I didn't say everyone, but sometimes we're not recording the scores consistently. And that's our job. I know we have, the teachers have a lot to do. I get that. But you got to put these scores in, because parents want to know. And people, the parents are doing their job. They're checking, but when you don't see anything in the space, then that says we got to do better. And this is not to put anybody down. It's just a fact. If it's not there, we got a problem. So how do you justify the grade? When my brother was in high school, I went to represent my parents. They gave him a D and no scores. Well, explain that to me. And the guy said, well, uh, no, explain. We teach the same thing. Test scores, quizzes, special projects. What did you do?
That was a standard thing to put the grades in.
And he just said, well, well, I left there immediately going to the office. Well, it's not good enough. I'm telling him what he has to do. We all have a responsibility. And if we're supposed to put them in, we need to put them in. That just doesn't make sense.
I agree. I think ten grades per, per nine weeks, that's a low number. And if, if you're really working and teaching accordingly, you should, by the, right, by the quarter halfway through, you might have ten. But beyond that, it should be greater than ten.
Could you define board-approved methods for assessing?
District shall have board-approved methods for assessing and reporting the quality of student academic person.
That's.
Maya, go ahead.
I think that's the methods we're talking about.
Are they, are they, they say information shall be published in appropriate handbooks. Are they listed someplace, identified someplace?
Not that I'm aware of.
We would have to adapt.
And Alan is saying no.
So, here we go again. You want us to approve this that says a district shall have board-approved methods for assessing?
I think that part's already your policy.
It's already on there.
Correct.
Right.
So, so I'm asking, what is that, and where is that? And why would we continue to approve that if nobody knows what it is? I mean, we know what it is. You said, but what is it?
Looking at the handbook right now, it does talk about the CAP and the MAP assessments. So it talks about the standardized.
Okay, so board-approved methods for assessing means those two assessments.
But, so it says a district shall have board-approved methods for assessing and reporting the quality of student academic. There's no grade for taking CAP. There's no, like, we don't retain students if they don't pass. So we can't actually use CAP as an assessment measure, because that's not technically something that the board uses. I'm just being a bootleg attorney.
I'm just asking for clarity for something, again, if it was board policy, fine. But that doesn't mean we have to accept board policy if nobody knows what it means.
I completely agree. I just was pointing out the only, the change.
Yeah, I know what's in red is new, and it's not in red.
Yeah, and this is your current policy, and it doesn't sound like, you know, what it is or it's very clear.
Okay.
I thought it was the grading scale.
So before we accept the second read, could we at some point come together and to look at the policy in itself and how we can revise it before we put this into practice?
Yeah, if it's not what you want, don't adopt it.
Right. Well, I'm not arguing about the red.
No, I know you're not. But if you got, but if you got concerns about the other part of it, if you want to adopt what's in red, so it's part of the policy for now, you could do that. But I would suggest that if you have concerns about how the other part of the policy is written, that you come back and fix it to what you want.
Right.
Right?
Surely making it clear that everyone knows what it is, what it means.
Right.
But does it make sense to vote on the whole thing?
We're not voting to.
No.
Oh, you just read, oh, okay.
Just reading.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, but if we do, if we do approve the second reading, then that means there's one more reading before it's adopted.
Right, but that means you could still come back with changes for that final read and vote.
We need to rewrite.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Now, but how do we find out, and what's the procedure of clarifying that? I mean, just not going away saying it's not clear. What do we do to clarify it?
So I would recommend that we provide you with some evidence that the board could say, yea, throw that one in, throw that one out, by some of the things that are going on in the classroom now.
Okay.
Where you would have, what you were stating, quizzes, classwork, homework, that, that type of.
Right, and wouldn't that be important for the teacher to know what methods to use?
Because they're using them. You just don't know what they are.
Correct, but, but that, if I'm using five, are you, are you requiring five to determine then the academic progress? Are you only using three?
I agree.
So that.
And is the appropriate handbook, the student handbook, the teacher handbook, which handbook are we referring to?
I, I was referring to the student handbook. I would think it would be the student handbook.
We'll need to look at those.
So we'll get that proposal next board meeting, or suggested, okay.
Yes.
Or December, because we have only two board meetings left.
In December?
We have two board meetings left. The other one is mid-November. The other one is mid-December.
Two in December.
Two in December.
Oh, two in December, okay.
One in November.
By December's meeting?
Yes.
Do we have it in advance, the wording?
Oh, yeah, could we?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, there's no magic to the next read. If you just get it and you're not ready to prove it, you can always move it to the next table, basically.
Too many reads as.
Right. But get, but get it how you want it, would be my strong suggestion.
Thank you. So we'll table that.
And then by the
December.
December meeting, and we'll have the wording in advance.
Thank you. So at this point, we are now ready for communications, and we'll start with Dr. Faust.
So again, I am thoroughly excited about the work that is going on within the district and how we are moving forward with the work and how we are getting students on track for being successful. One of the things I stated before, we had gone to Lawrence today to speak with PSDE and to talk about some of the, the work that could be done in giving access and letting our school's office see how to help principals look at data and have access to data. So I thought that was a valuable trip. The, the celebratory things that are going to be happening are, you know, awesome. I can't wait till the principals' meeting for, for more. And honestly, I can't wait till the next board meeting. I'm already excited, because we will have those schools that are not on the list, and I can just tell you, there are nine. And so that's another celebratory opportunity that we have that's coming up. And just literally, I know that, again, I won't, I think we'll probably have, we'll have actually books for each of you on each school, so you can see that data. We just, I want to give you a little bit at a time, because I didn't want all the celebration to take place in one meeting. But I think that's important. I also think it's important for the, the community and everyone to know that it takes a lot to move a district. And the work and the efforts that are put in are not taken lightly. And literally, it takes strong individuals, leaders have to be strong in order to do the work. Teachers have to, you know, they go home and they regroup and they come back. It's not just, we call it, it's not a job. You have to love this. You have to have a passion to do turnaround work. And again, when we just have individuals who just say random things about our school district, that's not fair for our kids. And although I tell them I'm not a dot, but when we're talking about the school district in a negative way, I don't know if you are a dot either. Because clearly, if that's how you feel about it, then, you know, I just say those things because our kids deserve better. And when individuals are not talking positively about our schools and the work that's going on, and you see those things that are going, you know, they're only about, you know, I'll say, there's a low percentage that comes through. But there's a high percentage of teachers and, of, of community members that bust their behind every day to make sure that kids have what they need, that schools have what they need. And that goes, those are like the unsung heroes. But we pay close attention to those individuals who, for some reason, have a gripe or an axe to grind. But I want us to focus on those individuals who are doing what they are supposed to be doing, because we don't just support the one. because we don't just support the one, the naysayers. We support those individuals who are actually doing that work every single day, but I don't think we give them the, the, the due diligence on a daily basis. So this is one of those messages where I just ask all of you, community members and board members, to take a look at ourselves. What are you doing that's positive to impact the learning for our kids? It can't be done just by the, the six individuals up here. It has to take a conscious effort. And I can say this. Every leader has a different style. And you have to recognize that. You can't look at everyone, as teachers cannot teach every child the same way. You have to differentiate amongst the kids. You have to differentiate amongst the leaders in the building. Not everyone comes with the same skill set. I really and truly just want us to think, you can't raise the same kids. Or I have children, but I take a different approach with both of the girls. I don't hold them, well, they think I do, but they're different. And so we have to rear them differently. But I think we forget about that as adults. Or when we are talking about the impact that leaders have, it's like, well, if this person does it, that may not be their skill set. And we have to recognize that. Or that may be their skill set. You have to just understand what differentiation means. And there's a time for toughness. There's a time for celebration. There's a time for, as Stephen Covey says, sometimes you have to get in front of the wagon and cheer them on. And other times, you have to get behind it and crack the whip. And so we're doing a little bit of both. But we just cannot celebrate all day long, every single day. We do have to crack the whip to make sure that those scores, those kids, and I am not a test-driven person. So I need for people to stop saying that. I am a standards-driven person. You teach the standard that is aligned to the whatever, whatever assessment. It could be a teacher-made assessment. So I want people who are not educators to understand that. And then those who are not as gifted in the academic side, instructional side of it, to understand, we don't push tests just to be doing that. You have what's called Every Student Success Act. So by federal law, I'm held accountable to make sure that we meet federal standards. And so, yes, I am gonna come, talk about it often, about testing. Because by federal design, it's not the map. The map has no place in federal. That's how you get that. I think it's about $37 million in federal funds. We are counting in federal, Trump state and all the others. But we have to concentrate on federal. It's called, if you don't know it, it's ESSAact.org. It replaced the No Child Left Behind. And so that's where we are. And we have to make sure that kids are learning. And if we're not doing that, then we're getting in the way. And so I welcome your, your kind thoughts. I welcome your, your thoughts on education. But if we aren't doing what's best for kids, I question where you reside.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. We now have board reports. I'll wait till afterwards, and then I'll make my report.
I have a letter to share that I received from Jeffrey Wells about using district facilities without charge. I forwarded it on to Ms. Drew and Dr. Faust.
Will they just send it to you?
He addressed it to me, and I'm sharing it here at the board meeting. I already shared it with the superintendent and president.
You have any other comment?
He wishes. Yeah, that's something that we all need to look at and maybe discuss at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I had an opportunity to visit Washington, Harmon, Fairfax, Wyandotte. And it was quite interesting to do my tours around. The school principals and leaders, administration did an excellent job of showing me through the school, allowing me to, you know, interact with some classrooms. And I really appreciate that. And Mr. Pittman also, Pitch, Pitch, sorry. Pitch was able to join me at Washington. So we had great dialogue after that. It was really good to interact and see what good things are happening in our high schools. Also, I was able to see the new facility at Wyandotte. Ms. Stewart spoke to us after a candidate, they had a candidate forum, so those who were able, candidates who talked to the seniors who were able to vote this year. And they were texting in their questions to the candidates. And it was really great to see what they were learning in action because they had learned through their books about the election process and the importance of voting and government and things of that nature. So it was really great to interact with those students and be able to tour Wyandotte. So Wyandotte, there's a lot of great things going on over there as far as they have the programming classes, the woodshop classes. They brought that back. And it was just great to see the students' excitement. They're learning Python. Python is a language that I learned back in the day. But it was great to see that they, their classes were full of students who wanted to know that trade and skill and get better at their skills. So as we continue to sharpen and challenge them, they're up for that challenge. And one thing I did observe when I went to Fairfax is the need for more room. You know, last year, board, we voted to add additional slots for the restoration process for those students who were suspended, long-term suspended, so that they would have a place to go to continue that learning. Awesome program. People, students were there, learning with teachers. It was exciting to see. But one thing I didn't realize is that Fairfax had a waiting list due to space. Everyone encouraged me, come and visit, come see for yourself. Oh, my goodness. Yay, yay, yay. And when I got there, I, I did the graduation for Fairfax. And I tell you, it was standing room only because the community was excited, the students were excited to be graduating. And so, board, I wanted to recommend that we do a tour because if you've not been to Fairfax for a while, you'll see that there's a, a lack of space there. And I firmly believe that we can, the same standards we have with our other schools, the same level of integrity and spacing, as they're looking for how we can redo the borders, I want us to think about Fairfax having their own building, meaning their own gymnasium, their own cafeteria, their own space for even lunchroom for their teachers, so that they can have a true building to be proud of. When we send a child to Fairfax, we're believing in them. We know they can catch up with their credits. We know they can graduate in a great environment. So Oletha and Shiny Mission also have an excellent program in a full-standing school dedicated to their alternative program. So I wanted to offer the board, when we get down to the calendar area, if we could think of a day for us to go out to Oletha and Shiny Mission and look at their schools, to see how their program is set up, so that we can bring it back and maybe find a place in the school district. We have lots of buildings that we can truly dedicate a full school to our Fairfax kids because the spirit is there, the dedication is there. And I truly believe that it's time for them to have a full school where it can flourish and grow and be able to not have a waiting list, but to fully meet the needs of the students that need to be there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank her for going and looking at Fairfax. I see you saw what I saw too. So thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Wen?
I just had the opportunity to go to Stony Point South and sit in on the kindergarten PLC meeting. And again, the, the enthusiasm of the teachers, they were assessing the MAP scores and the CAP scores and identifying their kids that needed reteaching or how they would use a different strategy. So it was exciting. And then, of course, I'm a member of the children's cabinet. And so that meeting is on November 1st. And the parent and teachers, it's the funding from, from there. And then November 2nd, the KSB board meeting.
Thank you. Spade, you have anything?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for your cards, your concerns. We're gonna have my mom's funeral this weekend. So again, I just thank you all for caring.
Thank you. I attended a KSB workshop. It's titled Leading Change Effort. And it was all day. Janie was there with me. And I enjoyed listening and learning about how to deal with change. I did visit the candidate forum that was at Wyandotte House High School and toured along with Dr. Yeager and Ms. Humphries as we looked at the classrooms that were there in that school. And then I did attend on October 21st, the community forum that Green Bush suggested that we partake as a district. And it was at Wyandotte High School. And I arrived there at 4:15 where they met with some of the teachers. They got some feedback from them, as well as at 6:30, they started, they met with parents. Really want to encourage parents to be able to come out to these events so that we can get that feedback as a district, so that we can learn how we can make things better. With all of that being said, I want to share some communication with the district, with the school board members. And so, being raised here in Kansas City, Kansas, I grew up in numerous periods of change and growth. There were generations who did not want to see the changes take place, yet over a period of time, we did adapt. Repetitively, there have been numerous conversations in the media, the community, the schools, and even the homes of our city, expressing various ideas about our school district. The comments have been both positive and negative. I have taught for 35 years in this school district and had to learn how to adapt to new and innovative approaches to teaching. Some of the changes I agreed with and some I did not. However, we pushed forward in a concerted effort towards, for the betterment of our students. As a school board member, I have presented with the policies in which we are expected to follow and implement, which is our primary focus. I am constantly reading for clarification to comprehend my role as a member of the governing body. Our collective leadership is essential in raising the bar for academic achievement in our schools. As a community, we have to embrace the fundamental concept to work collectively with each other. We are beginning to see the results of this team effort already. When new ideas and approaches are presented to us for consideration, we have a transition with the primal concept to advance with a strong consideration for success. I believe we all share the common desire to go forth to help our students. We are a team of workers who must present a sense of unity, which will indicate the highest success to master the highest accomplishments leading the district. It will be necessary for us to build relationships with all stakeholders and maintain open communication with a central desire to create a strong foundational disclosure. There will be times when we may not agree. Yes, I am encouraging, asking, soliciting all stakeholders to trust, ask questions, come to meetings, and let's work together to arrive at an equitable, reasonable level of success. We have to trust our superintendent, his cabinet, the board, the administrators, principals, teachers, and, yes, our students, to be guided by ethical means of success. We may, we may not agree with the approach that is being made, but growth requires giving and taking. With all that being said, I do encourage us to stop looking at the past mistakes as a means to criticize, but to use it as a balance for a greater, above-board desire to increase and meet the expectations of promoting student achievement. What was done in the past worked very well for all at that time. Now is the time to move forward collectively. Let's not lose sight of our goal. We each have something unique to contribute to reach it. Let's use our fullest potential to share and work to fulfill the attainable path as a team. This district is not supported by one person. It is supported by all of us. We are one. We are strongest working together in unity. Let's continuously build a foundation of friendship to achieve excellence. Let's get and stay on track. And I like to present that as a way of us redirecting ourselves so that we can move forward, so that we can gain the success. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, we have an employee, two employees who work here, Lisa and Terry Scott. And we just want to keep them in their family in our prayers as they experience a loss in their family.
Thank you. So right now, we are ready to go to executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The letter for BPU. Thank you. Mr. Goheen, if you will.
I know it got added. Were there questions about it? The board had directed, or I think there was even a motion for a letter to go to BPU. It was in the August meeting for Dr. Faust to send a letter to BPU for me to help insist drafting that. I did send the letter instead of Dr. Faust, drafted that up and sent that. I think everybody's seen a copy of it at this point, haven't they? So are there questions about it?
No.
I haven't seen a copy of it.
We, I haven't seen a copy. Have you received a copy?
There was one sent.
You didn't, I mean, when I asked you, you did not respond. So this is no surprise.
No, no, no. I understand what you're saying, and I'm going to clarify. I'm going to clarify.
Well, I can certainly circulate a copy to everybody. I don't have a problem with that. I, that's why.
Okay. The reason why I did not send it, because I was under the assumption that the letter was, that we were supposed, that the letter was going to be sent by Dr. Faust, but he requested that you send it in his place. I did not know that I needed to send it to them because of the fact that we had agreed that the letter was going to be sent. Now, if there was a mistake, that was on my part.
It could be made too. I should have sent it to everybody. I'm sorry. I, I thought everybody.
That's normal protocol.
That's my apologies. Yeah, I'll circulate it.
And I apologize for that as well. And in the future, I will make sure when that happens, it will come to each of you.
I've got a written copy of it here, but I don't have it.
I will. What I have in my email, I will forward it to you all. Okay. Thank you. Doesn't matter. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Wen?
Oh, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we cover.
Yeah, I just asked you.
My mistake. I apologize. Charge it to the head and not the heart.
Well, likewise. So we're in this love fest here.
Okay. So with that in mind, thank you so much. With that in mind, we are now ready to go to executive session. I need a motion that the board recessed to executive session. Okay.
Eight twenty.
At eight twenty. And we need how many minutes? Need 10-minute break first.
10-minute break first. Okay, I understand. Yeah, 10, 10 minutes there with potential action to follow on this.
Okay. So we will, the board will recess to executive session at 8:20 for 10 minutes to consider a hearing officers' report and recommendations on an employee termination appeal pursuant to an exception for non-elected personnel under coma. The board will resume back at 8:30 with possible action to follow.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we will recess at 8:20, returning at 8:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Dyes have it. Thank you.